Good evening, everyone. This is 6:45 PM. And this is the e-learning hearing for Mahomet's Human Board of Education. I'd like to call it the order here at 6:45 on September 20th. This time, I'd like to remind everyone to please sign in and silence your cell phones. I'd like to remind visitors, in order to facilitate an effective meeting, if you wish to make comments during the e-hearing, to get those visitor guidelines filled out and public participation due only until dawn. Public participation is allowed during the public participation portion of the meeting. Other than that, board meetings are not interactive with those independents. Do we have a roll call for this?
Lamb.
Here.
Keith.
Here.
Hendricks.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
McMurray.
Here.
Hennessy.
Here.
McCollum.
Here. And can we stand for the pledge, please?
My pledge, ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Board members, who have seen the agenda for the hearing, is there a motion to approve the agenda? Second. Second, Lamb, thank you. Discussion on the agenda for the e-hearing. Hearing on your roll call vote, because you have the key time, I agree.
McMurray.
Yes.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
McCollum.
Yes, Dr. Rommel.
So, this evening, I am bringing to you the e-learning plan. And I'm being just so quick here to pull that up. Sorry about that. Let me know when Sherri.
Yes.
Oh, great, thanks, sorry. Okay, so what I'm sharing tonight is the e-learning plan. And after, the option for districts to have e-learning plans has been available, started as a pilot and then became available to districts as an option in lieu of having these emergency school days. So, in the past, typically, they've been used for implement weather, but at times, they've been used for facility, for districts who've needed to shut a building due to facilities, maybe lots of power, lots of water per day. And so, the creation of the e-learning plan has allowed districts to substitute learning on those days in lieu of making them up at the end of the school year. So, current school code allows for districts to utilize up to five e-learning days instead of making those up, like I said, at the end of the school year. Following last year's remote instruction, we feel like we have a good handle on what that might look like for us and have the ability to substitute these days out and continue with instruction. So, it will look a little bit different at the K-5 level than it would at 612 simply because you're talking about a day that is not really planned to be off from school. So, students in K-5 who do not take devices home would not have a device at home in order to push out learning via Google Classroom. So, those students would have essentially what would be a packet in their backpacks. We've talked to teachers about the material that would be included in that snow day packet. Teachers were excited about wanting it to still, especially for elementary students, to still feel somewhat like a snow day. So, maybe activities that might center on things that they could do at their house and have some choice while still reviewing material, some math, some reading, and some other things. 6 through 12 would have a condensed day. And they would have a set time. Again, teachers would not necessarily be coming into the building and just like at your houses where you have different levels of internet access. Our teachers have different levels of internet access at home. So, if they are able to go live and they wish to do that, they would have a set time for their periods of the day in order to go live. If not, they would just be pushing information out via Google Classroom. So, for attendance on these days, students would be marked present upon completing and turning in the work for that day. So, if a student doesn't have internet access on an e-learning day and they are unable to log on, they still would have the opportunity to make that workout and be marked present for that day. So, there's really not much new or different in there. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have or any suggestions you have. So, shared with all the building leadership teams. And then, once the jar of glass leave.
So, the only plan that needs a hearing is the e-learning.
Just the e-learning. Correct, correct.
What if we use beyond those five days? Is it just like a typical year where you don't need to make those up then? Is it an extra kind of thing?
I need to look on that. I mean, yeah, if you go beyond the five emergency days and you can request what they'd consider to act a bad days.
Okay, okay.
So, we're talking things like disastrous weather and not so, not COVID.
Right, correct, yes. This is like in lieu of making snow days or, or, seven, eight snow days, yes, okay.
Good. Other questions for Dr. Rommel?
During the, a couple of the teachers were concerned about the junior high that schools could be having new material learned. What was the, how come up to that?
So, when we talked and followed up with the building principals, it would be more of a, especially at the high school level, more of a case by case and course by course. That's how we kind of let that at the dirt meeting. Because when you're talking about an AP course, for example, they're on a pretty tight frame, tight frame in terms of information that has to be received and taught in that set time for the AP exam. But in most other cases, it could be review material or introduction to the next lesson, so.
Okay, and the questions for Dr. Rommel?
So, if it's a case by case basis, sort of the example Colleen gave, how do the students know which class is going to be pushing new material? And we, as I sat home and watched some of this delivered online, it was hard to tell sometimes. It was not consistent across classes, what was expected of the students. So, how are the students to know that?
How are the students to know what their assignment is or?
And whether or not they're going to be keeping pace, yes.
So, it's, in, as part of the e-learning plan, then information is pushed out by nine o'clock and so, students would know by nine o'clock that morning what their assignment was for that day. It's hard to say, like, because these are not planned for days, what, if it would be new material or not. Because even in an AP course, it could be a review day would be the scheduled day for that. So, by nine o'clock and then students who don't have access would have access to following, to do the makeup work or communicate with their teacher then when they return to school if they have questions or they need additional support.
I think the question that was brought up by the teachers was, if a student doesn't have internet access and then this is the day, then the next day, they come back and they've missed a day of school. And if they already are a little behind, how are they going to make that up? So, they just miss school. So, that was the concern of the teachers was, what do we do with kids who might already be on the bubble? Who knows?
But I do feel like when we came on that meeting that the teachers were talking that they felt that they would know, most of them would not be pushing out the material.
Right, I was just saying that that was the issue was, it wasn't about how they were delivering. It's more, we don't want kids to be missing things. And if you're not, if it's not desperately needed, like an AP class, then we try not to put the kids in that.
Absolutely, I, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? We did have one member of the public have to speak during the e-hearing portion of the meeting, and that's Erica.
She just left, I don't know if she'll ask her. She didn't, she didn't come in yet.
Yeah.
She may have a test for the next, um, Monday.
Okay, we're going to take that as the intended for the next meeting. Is there any further information or any further business for the e-hearing? Hearing on our motion to approve. Thank you, is there a second? Second, discussion on the, roll call vote, please.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Keith.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Hendricks.
Yes.
McMurray.
Yes.
McCollum.
Yes. All right, we'll take the brief break and we'll start the regular meeting. I'll let you have a listen.
Yes, thank you.
Yes. Consent agenda, board members, you've had an opportunity to review the consent agenda. I would like to ask that we approve the consent agenda with one change. We did get a late request under personnel for Kristen Hood for some unpaid leave in November, and I would recommend that we approve the consent agenda with that as amended and added to it. We approve that. Is there a motion to view that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
The discussion on the consent, anything I would like to remove from the consent agenda for individual discussion? Okay, very good. We have a roll call on the consent agenda.
Matt, I just have a question. I really need to pull it out to have separate votes.
No, okay.
But I was just wondering about the overnight approvals?
Yeah.
That I noticed that the girls' sports, the girls have to pay for it, but the boys wrestling, the district pays for it. Is there any reason why we pay for some sports and not others?
So the wrestling is not paid for by the district, it's completely paid for by the host team in Montana.
So that was what, there were three, the Montana one I noticed was, but one and two, one is in Sterling, Sycamore. And it says cost per student is zero, entry fee and hotel paid through athletic department accounts.
I was, so the, I believe the volleyball tournament is something new that we've done and I signed the same question for Matt. I thought we were supposed to, um, rock and roll.
Right, I noticed the Montana one, but I just, that one clearly paid for by the, which, for that, right?
I asked Matt to look into
Sometimes I always work on the district.
The district paying for the volleyball across country overnight as well, because I noticed the same thing.
Sometimes the sport has money in their sport account from their fundraiser or there's a limited amount of district money that goes to all sports. And it's divided fairly representative. I don't recall the formula anymore, changed everything over the years. In a kind to give more and more, I quote it all, to all the sports. On top of that, then the sports are allowed to do a fundraiser. And that money is in their account. And I think, and I'm just guessing here because I don't know for sure, but I know that oftentimes the fundraising money is used for some of the stuff. So I, and then sometimes they have to do other things with the fundraising money, so. That may be up to the coast of the team.
If, I'm sorry, Matt, if we approve this and Mr. Hensley comes back and says that we are somehow able to cover costs, are we able, if we only reapprove these students?
No.
I'll work with him on that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're just, we're essentially approving the fact that we know the lead on overnight trip.
Okay.
Well, I know that, if you say that all the sports are covered and given funding, I know that we had the junior high, we had four students go to state for the golf tournament. They didn't have, even have uniforms or anything. So I guess I'm now wondering, how do we ensure that all of the sports actually have access to funding for things like uniforms for students and things like that? Because I have not seen, that has not been my experience that all those sports are.
We can have Mr. Hensley and Mr. Fisher come in and do a presentation on that.
Why would you agree?
Another thing with junior high golf was we literally just started it, so.
I'm just asking, a big honest comment about, you know, I.
Great question. No, I think your question is valid. And I, I was just trying to offer that this was a brand new sport and we, as you said, we had three boys go to state this past week and one girl, which is, which is awesome. So clearly there's a great future with, with those programs.
Any other questions? Let's have a roll call on the consent agenda, please.
Hennessy, though, Schultz?
No.
Keith?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Big Murray?
Yes.
McCollum?
Yes.
Thanks. And as part of the consent agenda and personnel part, we just approved some new teachers. And Dr. Rommel is here to introduce us to some new voters.
So excited. So we're going to start off tonight with Margaret Jarvis. She is, she is.
She's been here before.
She's been here for a long time. So we are happy to have Margaret back as our district 504 coordinator. That was the new position for this year. She was born and raised in Mohammed. Her and her husband Nick both graduated from Mohammed Seymour High School in 2009. She earned a BS in elementary education, graduating at the top of her class from the University of Illinois in 2013. Before transitioning to this new role, she spent seven years teaching all three grade levels at Lincoln Trail. And she also served as a head coach of the high school dance team for five years, leading the team to state championship in 2015. Margaret and Nick live in Mohammed and welcome to their son Ike in April. Margaret spends most of her free time being a new mother and she enjoys practicing her Christian faith, spending time with family and friends and reading and doing yoga. So welcome back, Margaret. So next up this evening is Lindsay Connor. She is the new PE teacher at Lincoln Trail. So Lindsay is very excited to be joining our district. She grew up not too far from Mohammed in Mid. She graduated from Southern Illinois University in Carbondale, and this will be her 13th year in the field of education. She previously taught physical education in both Champaign and Urbana and comes with lots of experience in the area of adaptive physical education. She currently resides in Monticello with her husband Derek and their two children and her two Australian shepherds. She likes to stay active with her family by taking hikes and bike rides. She also enjoys gardening. She's making the transition to the, she said making the transition to our school district has been smooth and enjoyable. Looking forward to another great year here in Mohammed with her students. So please join me in welcoming Lindsay. So Lincoln Trail is honor roll tonight. I'd like to introduce to you our new fourth grade teacher, Christine Russo. She grew up in Clinton and graduated from the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign in 2010 with a BA in elementary education. She spent the last 11 years teaching fourth grade at Dixon City before moving to Lincoln Trail this year. She has finished her master's degree also at the U of I in curriculum and instruction. Finished that in 2018. She's lived in Mohammed for the past nine years with her husband and two daughters. She enjoys crafting, cooking, DIY projects around the house. And she's excited to be joining the school district and looking forward to giving that to the community in which she lives. So welcome. And lastly, this evening I have Carrie Maxi. She is a second grade teacher here at MPE. She could not be happier to be teaching here with us. She's been a teacher since 1994 and has been in pre-K and kindergarten the entire time. So moving to second grade has been a breath up right there, a little more independent, huh? And it's the move she needed. Carrie graduated from Eastern Illinois University with a certification in early childhood education and has a minor in psychology. She lives in San Jo with her husband Mark. Her youngest son goes to Milliken where he is running cross country in track. And her oldest graduated from Southern and now works for the Ford Corporation in Detroit. When not traveling, following running teams or teaching, she is a photographer. She owns her own small business where she specializes in boutique photography. She works with seniors, families and children in this little business. So she's very excited to be in Mohammed and can't wait to see what the future brings. So welcome, Carrie.
Okay, the staff who was just introduced, there's a longstanding tradition that at this point you are excused if you would like to leave and not participate in the rest of the meeting. In 14 years, I've been waiting for someone to stay, so if you would like to be the first, you've got the opportunity to be a ground grader. If I were you, I'd just could have on here, have a great night and wish you all a great day tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay. There you go. Okay, next up is donations. Dr. Hall.
We have four donations this evening for the board to accept. A $500 cash donation to Mom's Pantry from Tara and Daniel Biggs. A $500 cash donation to the boys soccer team from Robert and Lisa Mercer. $500 cash donation for our boys cross country team from Ramona Seaman. And a $500 cash donation also to boys soccer from Janto and Augustina Tajjadi. For a total of $2,000. Thank you. Appreciate the generosity.
Good. We appreciate all those donations and at this point I would entertain a motion to approve the donations.
So moved.
We'll give that to Colleen and a second to me. How's that?
Perfect.
All right. Any questions or discussions on donations? Roll call, please.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Big Murray?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
McCollum?
Yes.
Okay, communication time, PTO.
Me?
Yes.
I'm last literary G. I'm the communication liaison, I guess, for PTO. Okay, so first, a dog walk, dog walk fundraising period concluded September 13th. And those of you who haven't seen the Facebook post, we raised over $150,000 this year. That is a record and over like, I think it's double what we normally make. So, um, let's see. We'd like to thank the Bulldog students, families, staff and community for helping us make this a success. The Lincoln Trail Dog Walk Celebration will be Friday, September 24th in the morning at the old Middletown site. And the Middletown Prairie is will be Friday, October 1st. Families will be receiving emails about these celebrations and how they can participate. Book fair will be in person again this year and will take place October 18th to the 21st. And you'll get more information about that, too. And then staff appreciation, just want me to show you everything that we got. So we got all the teachers these little FA packs for Lincoln Trail and Middletown Prairie. And then inside of them were a bunch of coupons and gift certificates and that type of stuff from area businesses. There's also a raffle ticket, so some of the teachers were lucky enough to get a bigger prize. There's Los Rappus, they donated some stuff, Ice Daddies donated, um, Hoppy Chuck donated as well. So it's been a little fun trying to like, you know, just keep morale up and make sure that they know that they're appreciated. We're looking at different things to do during the school year and excited for it. So that's, I'm also the chair of that as well. Any questions? That's all I have.
Good, thanks.
It's kind of very, very nice.
Good to have a PTO page. We appreciate that.
Thanks.
MCA, are they here? Are they coming later?
Later.
Later, okay. And then anyone from the foundation? Thank you, Matt. Okay. Building reports, board members.
Are we going to skip visitors?
That's later in the agenda, I thought.
Oh, I thought it was supposed to be during the 7th.
Yeah. Huh?
Sorry, that's my mistake. There's a public comment down.
The public comment is under 10.
I should have taken out a lot of visitors.
But, I mean, things are important. We allow people to speak before we vote on things if they wish.
Board, what's your pleasure? Is there an hour to read, is there a downwind attempt?
I would be happy just to let people speak if they have something to say about an item we're voting on before we vote in the press conference, but.
We've got, we're going to be public comment one time, so do an hour of reading. I'm good, you're all right.
My vote is now.
But I'll.
How many comments have I got?
Okay, there's a five minute limit. I will let you know if you start to run close to that. I'll try to give you 30 or 60 seconds. I try to do that without interrupting you, so kind of do it as best I can. You can see Donna running along on that. I would like to remind everyone that this is not a time for personal attacks against anyone in the community or anyone associated with the school district. And I'd like to remind you that this is not an interactive question. But we're interested in what we have to say. So we'll just go in order. We'll start with Steve Greenley.
Good evening. My name is Steve Greenley. I am a resident of Mohammed. Ladies and gentlemen of the board and assembly of community members, I stood before you three months ago and told the alarming story of how my then 15-year-old daughter was presented a very objectionable book as the curriculum for her summer English course. I, along with several concerned community members, read excerpts of graphic material from various books that our students had been provided. I implored you to do the job that you are ostensibly elected to do, safeguard our children. I offered to be part of the solution. Since that meeting in June, two regularly scheduled board meetings have occurred and one study session was conducted to present the process of curriculum development. Policies were reviewed, discussions and debates covered points of procedure, whether or not it was realistic to read or review all books available to students. And it was suggested that we should be able to trust our teachers to make good decisions about the appropriateness of materials in their classrooms. There's been a lot of activity with no results and no accountability. I still have not received an answer to the question, how did this happen? Well, that should be safe. I no longer require an answer to that question because I've done my own research and discovered that this was not a one-time event. It wasn't the first time. It's still going on even now despite the public outcry. It is part of an ongoing and expanding effort to convert our institution of education into a center for indoctrination. Make no mistake, critical theory is not some nebulous idea circulating around the ether of post-secondary education, looking to find a crease or an open window into Mohammed. It's already infiltrated our district. An article in the Illinois News Bureau reported that staff in Mohammed schools have participated in workshops on social emotional learning and young people's mental health post-election, along with bystander training on confronting acts of bigotry and racism. This was apparently necessary because at least two of our administrators and a social work professor at the University of Illinois believed that Mohammed is an example of a white supremacy culture in need of addressing systemic racism in our schools. I implore everyone listening to take a walk through our schools. Look very carefully at the flags, posters, bulletin boards and quotes adorning our classrooms and hallways. How many of these concepts will you see? Systemic racism, global society, collective good, transformative education, social justice, fairness, diversity, equity and inclusion, civil unrest, tolerance, discrimination, bias, prejudice, mandate. These are the buzzwords of critical theory. They have replaced these constructs: achievement, respect, character, dignity, integrity, faith, liberty, justice, equality, unity, community, inalienable rights, peace, prosperity, discernment, consent. The hallmarks of a constitutional republic are being systematically erased from public education. This is intentional. We intend to confront it. We intend to stop it. It's too late for me to be concerned about how we got here because here is where we are. I demand action from my elected representatives to get critical race theory, this evil, out of our schools. If you stand with us, we'll work with you. If you do nothing or oppose us, we'll replace you.
I didn't plan to speak tonight, but I felt convicted to do so. My youngest goes to school here. She's a preschooler. I've just thought about enough with preying on children. She's three. We don't want to go into accusatory things, I understand that, but when you have Emma who's learning to talk, learning how to develop, cannot advocate for herself, she needs a parent to do so. So I'll just read an definition of harassment. Harassment is unwanted behavior which a, which a person finds offensive or which results in a person feeling intimidated or humiliated. It can happen on its own or alongside other forms of unwanted behavior. That could be spoken, written words or abuse, offensive emails, tweets or comments on social networking sites. Sites, offensive conduct named to but is not limited to, offensive jokes, slurs, episodes or name calls, physical assaults or threats, intimidation, ridicule, mockery, insults or quick downs, offensive objects or pictures or interference with educational work or social performance. Harassment becomes unlawful where, one, enduring the offensive conduct becomes a condition of continued enrollment, employment, relationship or two, the conduct is severe or pervasive enough to create an environment that is reasonable, that a reasonable person would consider intimidating, hostile or abusive. I felt today I was humiliated. It wasn't the first time. It was happening on the district grounds. I also want to note that you asked, you asked us not to call out anyone in particular, but I would like to let the public know that we elected you, we are supposed to trust in you, our educators. And we don't feel that. We don't, I don't see it where, for three minutes Steve was talking, there was one of these board members right here did not care to look at Steve for the first few minutes of him talking. I, I just feel our concerns are not being heard. I feel our concerns are on deaf ears and it's the expense of our children. Thanks.
Well, to clarify, I didn't say you don't care if we have an employee and we have an issue. What we can't do is we can't call them out or public. We do want to hear about what's going on.
I didn't, I didn't name anyone. I'm just.
I know, and you didn't, and I appreciate that. But it sounds like there needs to be a private conversation. Maybe with an administrator or eventually with a board.
Nobody, nobody calls me. I think I got a personal call from Dr. Hall, but no follow-up. But in the regards today, um, no. That was, that was a different issue, but.
You're, you're on break, I would. All right, I'll be there next.
You got it.
Oh, I'm glad that was. Monica Chery.
All right, good evening. My name is Monica Chery and I am here tonight as a resident, a native of Mohammed, an alum, a social worker, an individual who works in higher education and a voting community member. I am here to talk about some great concerns that I have about what is being touted as curriculum here in our community. It is the law for our schools to post the curriculum being taught in the classrooms. Curriculum is a totality of the educational experiences a student will have in any given course. What curriculum is not is a book selection guide with percentages of students by grade that will encounter said book. While books constitute one component of curriculum, there are a number of other components that comprise curriculum. Additionally, the list of books that has been posted is a useless document. Unless the percentage is 100% next to the book, a parent has no way to discern whether their student will encounter said book. Instead of stating that it is a big task to get curriculum posted, we need to find solutions to get it posted. While it is illegal for it not to be posted, more so it is neglectful of our educators, our administrators and our school board not to address this matter immediately. Thank you.
Gorilla.
I think it's important to know what motivates people. What brings me to these meetings to speak to the school board is that my parents immigrated here to the United States in 1965 from Chile, South America with illegal immigrants. We followed all the procedures to be able to come to this country. The two main reasons why my parents immigrated here was number one, they were not political people and they saw their country turning towards socialism. The second reason is that my parents wanted for us to have a better education than we would have gotten in South America. So education has always been very important. My degree is in child psychology and then my minor was in education. I worked at Cunningham Children's Home for six years. I had the most number of girls that went on to college because our big stressor was get a good education. That is the way to rise in this country and respect the laws. So that has always been a very, very big topic. Education is always very important. Out of the four children that came with my parents, all four of us went on to college. My parents did not have a high school degree, neither one of them, but they found other means to raise themselves in other methods of education. So I am appalled that, before I'm so appalled, I would like to thank all of the teachers that had my children because you taught my children well, how to read, how to write and how to add incredibly well. All four of my children are going on to college. All four of my children keep rising and rising and rising in their professions because of the solid education that they've received here in Mohammed Seymour. We did not move to Mohammed because of the educational system. We moved here because working at the children's home, we were emotionally exhausted with dealing with girls who had had horrendous childhoods. And we needed a quiet place to come to on the two days that we had off. We used to work, we used to live with the girls five days and then we had two days off. We just needed a quiet place. Thankfully for us, we came to a city that had very, very good teachers. Those teachers were allowed to be teachers. They were allowed to put their own personalities, their own ingenuities, their own intelligence into those children. It wasn't state mandated. So what I'm really concerned about is why I can go to Sam's and buy books on curriculums. It cost me $10 for each of these books. So if I count from K through fifth, which is what they offer there, I would have spent $60. I would have spent $60. But Mohammed Seymour, over the past 10 years, has spent over a million dollars on three curriculum directors. And you parents still have no curriculum. So what I'm here today to do is urge you to advocate for your children so that you know what your child's education is. Because that is what is going to make your children successful. So I plead with the board to please look into this issue. You're breaking three laws. There's a federal law, there's an Illinois law, and your own law about curriculum. But instead we get stonewalled, and nothing will happen. So we need to think of other methods to get the attention. And that is, and I'm just urging you to rethink about these issues. Thank you.
My name is Kim Brinley. I do have a daughter that is a junior. However, she is no longer a part of this school system. Now, if you would like to meet with me and discuss why she isn't, I have multiple reasons. I'd be happy to share them with you. Two major developments have occurred during the last week in the state of Illinois. First, judges in neighboring counties ruled that mask mandates in schools are an illegal application of quarantine. A quarantine is any device, procedure, action, or requirement intended to limit the spread of a disease. By statutory definition, physical separation, masking, testing, vaccinations are all types of quarantine. In order for quarantine to be legal, it must be ordered by the health department due to a specific health risk, and it must involve procedural substantive due process. The current masking mandate in Mohammed Seymour School District is a violation due process under law. Second, 10 of the 12 members of the Joint Committee of Administrative Rules, JCAR, a bipartisan panel of state legislators, voted to confirm that the Illinois State Board of Education overstepped its authority by revoking recognition of schools, public and private, because of masking policies. It determined that the four public schools, nine private schools in Illinois that did not comply with the mask mandate had not violated any existing rules. Therefore, ISB did not have the authority to punish schools for not following, for not following the governor's health guidance. The authority to suspend or revoke schools' recognition in cases like this has not been conveyed, conveyed to ISB by the General Assembly. The effort to do so, House Bill 4135, was referred to the Rules Committee by the House of Representatives on 9/321. Since rulemaking and health guidance has not been granted to ISB, decisions about compliance with public health requirements is under the authority of a local school board. Without fear of penalty, sanction, or punishment, you are, you are free to resume the last action that was approved by the 5-2 vote of this board. Do not relinquish local control before the legislature takes it away from you. Reinstate the mask optional plan that you voted for. We can fight HB 4135 together, or we don't have to. Just like my husband said, we can do it together, or we can remove you. It's your choice.
Marcy Hoff.
Hey, um, my talk is a little bit off. I want to talk a little bit about COVID testing here at Mohammed Schools. So for COVID testing to be legal here in Mohammed Schools, we need a few things to make that legal. First of all, we need a CLIA waiver. I need this to be a little bit, I need to be answered back from this. So do you know we have that CLIA waiver?
Yes, we have a plea waiver. We applied for it in November.
We have that?
Yes.
Okay. Has anybody seen that, like we have?
Be happy to put it on our website tomorrow.
Okay, can you put it on the website?
Absolutely.
Okay. And how about a provider order? Do we have a provider order?
Yes, we do.
Can you put that on the website?
Sure.
Do we have a medical director who we practice under?
Again, I will comment as I interacted. If you've got questions, you want to get to the board of administrators ahead of time, that's fine. We're happy to do those.
I think these are things that parents want to know. We have testing happening to our students. I think these are things we'd like to know.
Yeah, I think this is something that there may be a couple of parents that are interested in that. I would agree with that.
No, I think there's more than a couple.
No one's asked to this point.
Do we have a medical director that we act under?
Yes, we do.
Give a name.
Off the top of my head, Dr. Christy Clennett.
So we'll compile the order in order, but. And who does the testing? With medical staff or?
Again, this is.
Non-medical staff?
Marcy, I'm going to stop you. This is not interactive. If you'd like to submit your questions, you can do that. You've got two and a half minutes left.
Okay. So we have non-medical staff. I can talk as long as I want, okay? You don't have to answer. I can talk as long as I want. I can talk two and a half more minutes. So we have non-medical staff, we have medical staff that does the testing. If you think about it, you don't have to answer, because I know you're not going to answer. But I know that we have non-medical staff that does the testing. We have law and procedures that do the testing. But under the Nurse Practice Act, an RN cannot supervise non-medical staff. So we're in violation there. So some things that we need to think about in the district that are happening in violation, things that I know that are already happening. So, I mean, since we always have an attorney, you know, that we might see her over there, so. She, you know, got that, since she's already listening to all the things in common. I think she's trying to hold things together, but we don't already have that.
Okay, board members, you've had a chance to look at building reports. It's time for comments by board members. Karen, are you still with us? Anything you'd like to share tonight?
I have no comment tonight, thank you.
Okay, we'll go to Colleen.
I have no comment, please.
Then we'll go to Ega.
I was really struggling with what I was going to say tonight, anything. Over the last couple of months, there have been requests by the community to look at some of our court competencies as a district and provide them with curriculum and provide them with access to understanding what goes on in the classrooms. And then this last week kind of threw me for a bit of a loop, both locally and nationally. And I guess I'll just share the national tour, a little bit of context. I watched a little bit of the hearings that took place with the USA gymnastics team. And those women who came and shared their stories about the abuse that they suffered at the hands of their physicians. And as they were speaking, they shared stories about, you know, telling people in authority about their experiences and about the trauma that they were suffering and what was happening to them. And time and time again, those people in authority fanned them. They failed to protect those girls. All the way up to the level of the FBI. The FBI knew what was going on, and they failed those girls. They failed to act. They weren't aware that abuse was going on. And they acted in enough time, some of these other women could have been saved in the same experiences. So that was hard to watch for obvious reasons. And then we have things going on in our own district that I have to see on social media about kids in our district who are suffering and being bullied. And in my opinion, reaching out to us as the adults in the room and asking for our help. And I don't want to be the adults sitting in that hearing later where the FBI director comes and says, "Well, you know, this was really horrific, and finally we now know, and it won't happen again." Too little, too late. Ally Raisman said, "All we needed was one adult to do the right thing." And I ran for this position because I saw some things in the district primarily centered around doing our court competencies and doing right by kids, providing them with a safe space and curriculum. And all of my tenure on the board has been spent fighting to get those on agendas and being ignored and having no real ability to do that. Fighting procedurally to have discussions that, in my mind, should have been the reason that people ran for the board. But we spend more time bickering about how to get those discussions onto agendas than actually having the discussions. And I'm just tired. I'm tired of it. I mean, tonight, we have things on the agenda that I'm quite certain are going to get into semantics about what is curriculum and what are instructional materials, when really the discussion we should be having is why in the world, as a school district, is that not on the website already? Why do we have to have parents coming and begging us to know what's going on in their classrooms? And we can't seem to deliver that. And we spend a lot of time talking about facilities and arguing about how we get stuff on the agenda. And the thing that keeps me up at night is that we have very real issues going on with our kids being harmed, suffering trauma that is going to be with them lifelong. And we are the adults in the room, and no one is doing the right thing. And I'm exhausted by it, and I'm saddened by it. And I don't know what else to do. I ask for things to be added to the agenda. I'm told it's not the right time. People come and beg for information from us, and somehow we never actually seem to have a meeting where we get down to the bones of the business. And I have to read on Facebook that kids are being assaulted at our schools and talk to those children who say, "We don't report it because we know that the adults aren't going to help us." And I'm tired of having those discussions. I've been having those discussions for years now. It's the same story, it's on different mouths. We are failing here. And I'm tired of this board fighting about whether or not we're going to talk about something. And I just want to get some stuff done that protects these kids. I don't know how to do it. But I don't want to be that adult that stood there and said, "Yeah, just took one of us to do the right thing, and we don't seem to be able to get it together." That's all I have tonight.
Jeremy.
I don't really have too much either. I think that Nene has some good things to say. I know that there are some things in the pipeline that have not come to the surface yet, but wanting to make sure that they're done well. So I'm confident that those will be arriving soon.
Simon.
I'm going to pull it a little back closer home and just say a big thank you to our high school administration and our city council for having us on coming. A lot of our communities around us canceled theirs, and I really appreciate the way our administration kind of thought up a box and tried to make an opportunity for us to have a little bit of a a normal event this year. And based on the ticket sales, it seems like a lot of kids were very lucky to kind of have some, have some fun, I can almost imagine. So big thank you to our high schoolers for that, our city council, and our administrators. I also am so excited about what Ledley shared from PTO about the incredible fundraising that they did, Dog Walk. That's amazing. And then I also love, this is kind of a flashback, flash from the past, or you'll probably remember this one. We had Reading Shapes at Fangmon, and they're making a comeback. I started there. I was so excited to see that. I thought, "Oh, my gosh, that was like one of the highlights." I loved, I loved those. So they're making a comeback at MPE, and I just, I think that's a little, so.
I was just going to say, I want to say Fangmon one of the things that I learned last week was an amazing week for our kids all throughout all the schools, with the Spirit Week. It was just great to see happy kids doing the extra stuff that they couldn't do last year. So it was a great thing to see, and happy for all those kids.
I think it was Friday night. I was told between marching band, athletic teams, cheerleaders, students participating, about a meeting there, we had three reporters at our high school on Friday night. And of course, you know, dance participation went in the closing days of signing up, went from 300 or some kids to over 750 kids signed up. The tremendous dog walk report we heard earlier. So there's kids excited about being able to do some things at that house.
Let's go to Heather for financial update.
We are tracking, we are doing well with the revenue and expenses, having well with the current budget, even though it's early. I do want to let you guys know that our sales tax is up. So it is up from last year, of course, but then up from the previous year as well. So we're trending in the right direction there. We are getting the EDF money, and we just got $5 million more from the county for our property taxes. So now we just need, we have about $3 million to collect from this last property tax cycle before we start upcoming back in November with the next living. So let's continue with that process. So any questions or any other questions?
The county wanted us money they owe us.
Yes.
But they actually got us paid, so.
Yes, they're actually paying us, yes.
Questions for Heather. Christine Northrop.
She's not, but she reported in the packet.
Okay, so the report's in the packet. Dr. Romo, anything to add to your report?
No, I will just add that since submitted the report, and had a, you know, submitted a report prior to the opening day and the early release date, but just had an opportunity to touch base with teachers, following that, and lots of positive feedback on utilizing that time and really addressing some line loss that we know has occurred due to the pandemic. The teachers really appreciated that time to be able to really plan and address some of the needs. So lots of positive feedback looking forward. We've got some ideas for ways to make November even better. October really keeps having to focus on parent leader conferences, but we'll leave that out as of November. So happy to answer any questions about that or any other topic that was listed in the report.
Any questions for Dr. Romo? Dr. Romo.
Just a quick reminder about Bulldog Blueprint tomorrow evening here in person in the Middletown Perry Elementary Gym from 6:30 to 8:30, and a virtual session on Thursday evening from 6:30 to 8:00. Also, congratulations to our Interact Club. They received the Rotary Youth Service Award. They were recognized for their project to provide multicultural crans to the students and classrooms here at MPE in Lincoln Trail. And we've set our graduation date for the class of 2022 on Friday evening, May 20th.
Questions for Dr. Romo?
Can I add something to the building reports? There was a fall score at the high school, and it's in my heart. So I just want to acknowledge that we have 21 girls on the high school swim team this fall. And we don't have a pool, but we do have a swim team.
Thanks for making sure we did not forget about that.
Did not forget about those swimmers. They are driving a Leroy every night just to swim.
Okay. On the new visits tonight, first up is the district audit with Heather. I think that's not Hope here.
I'd like Heather to be as popular, as we probably already know.
Hope is not on the agenda, but I see Hope.
She is Muhammad. I'm sorry. I just would like to say a couple of things is that, first of all, I appreciate you and your team. I mean, I can't imagine the detail that you guys have to go through. But also thanks to the whole central office and the EOPs of the schools for continuing to help out with the audit on a regular basis, because a lot of work does go into both sides. So I do appreciate it. And I hope, and I do appreciate Hope's continual guidance, because anything new comes up, I call her. It's like a 911 call. So just to make sure we're doing everything correctly, so. And she's been doing that for me before I put a cane to her.
Thank you, Heather.
You don't want to help us all. Hope, you're working on a dance.
Okay, sure. Yep. Thanks for having me here tonight to present the results of the financial statement audit for your fiscal year ended June 30, 2021. I'm going to move ahead, because I can talk through it without the slides in there. They'll pop up. But I'm just going to go over briefly a summary of the audit process and discuss some of the highlights from your report deliverables and then available for any questions. And if I can't answer them, I can try to get back to you. Jumping ahead to slide three there, one more, just to talk a little bit about the audit process. As Heather mentioned, it is, it's a significant process. We start the process with that first glass there on the left. We do a risk assessment to determine what areas to focus on each year. We brainstorm, and we come up with these items as an example. And we start with internal control testing, which we do come out, actually do some preliminary work in April, select some samples and go through your internal controls. And then at year end, we come back out after year end in July and go through some of these other areas. I won't go through them one by one, but some of our procedures include confirming balances with third parties, banks, investment companies, the county, ISBE, federal granting agencies, et cetera. And we also look at invoices. We vouch to invoices or trace to invoices. We pick random samples of your general payables and your payroll expenses to test those and look at the internal controls and then the related underlying expenditure and supporting documentation for those. As mentioned there, too, another area, which we talk about each year, is activity funds unique to school districts. So we have a focus on that. A little bit of a unique focus this year, which I'll explain in a few minutes. And then also, the uniform grant guidance is your federal testing. We're required to do a single audit when we spend over $750,000 of federal funds. This year, we tested two programs. IDEA is a frequent program to test here because of the larger dollar of expenditures. This year, that new ESAR funding was also large enough, we tested it also as an additional program. Next, here, this discusses each of the audit deliverables. The first item there is your audited financial statements, your annual financial report. The results of that were an adverse opinion because it's not in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, not on the accrual basis of accounting and modified accrual, but an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion on the cash basis and the regulatory basis and of course with ISBE. The second item there is, we do your report under government auditing standards, since you do have that federal funding. And so we issue a report there. There's one finding in that, which I'll go over. And then the single audit report is that federal report. That looks different this year in your board packets. You received all of these reports. The single audit report looked a little bit different this year because in the past, they were included in the back schedules of the ISBE form, the AFR form. This year, because of all the new funding that was given to districts, they knew some of the auditing of that could have been delayed. So they pulled that out of the AFR form so it should still get issued, and it's supposed to be delivered by October 15. So that was issued separately this year in our traditional format for all other government entities. But we were able to get your single audit or federal audit completed, so it can all be completed and filed by the October 15 ISBE deadline. There are no findings there in the federal funding. There's also government's communication letter required by our standards. I'll go over a few. A management letter, if we have any other recommendations we want to make, which we do, did issue one of those this year, I'll go over. And then also, a couple of years ago, by GADA, is a consolidated period financial report. So we audited that, gave our opinion on that, and that is in your packet. As I mentioned, just a couple of findings or observations to point out. The gas report, the government auditing standards report, did have one observation or finding, and that's just that we, as the audit firms, prepared the annual financial report. And you guys, Heather's office, did review this report, and we issued our opinion on it. That's something we're required to report per our standards. The federal funds report, as I mentioned, our focus this year was IDEA and ESAR, and we have no findings there. The IDEA, we test almost every year, and good history there with finding off and on, but no findings this year. I'd say great crowd, all the ESAR funding. They guys, a lot of new requirements, a lot of new information, and we looked at that in detail and did not have any issues with the way that was handled and which important place there, a relationship and trust that went through. The management letter, wanted to mention that. This year, I wanted to bring up a few recommendations related to the activity funds. There were some new requirements this year related to activity funds. The accounting standards issued a new GASB, Government Auditing Standards, I know lots of terminology here, but GASB 84 related to fiduciary funds. Activity funds fall under fiduciary funds, because it's really holding money for others. So we had to look at things a little bit differently this year. This year, as you probably saw when you approved your budget, those items now come into a column underneath the education fund. They decided there's enough control by some of these outside funds that they need to be reported within the school district. So with that, we had to look at things a little bit differently, and just came up with a few recommendations. Of one, there's, your software allows you to track that in a different manner now. So I know there's, you're going to look into how to use that software to be in accordance with this new standard. Also, just taking advantage of your funds being part of, I think, the activity funds being part of Skyward, and really having an extra look at the, reviewing some of the , I know that bankers come each month, but I also recommend spending, doesn't stop us, you know, to review some activity and the funds with that information in Skyward. Make sure all the activities are in Skyward, because one small thumb that is not in Skyward. And then, just like I said, looking for anomalies. We found there are some, a few accounts with negative balances that are really borrowing from other funds. Recommend trying to control that. And then we did find one misposting out of one invoice out of our sample, so not very many, but one that didn't have really the proper sign off of review. So I think this additional review of those activity funds would help alleviate some of those issues and control that area that's always a bit of a risky area. The governance letter, just required communications to go over that quickly. Pretty clean report. Significant new accounting policies are noted in this letter. As I mentioned, you did have to implement GASB 84 on fiduciary funds this year. That did change the way activity funds show in your annual financial report. There are no significant accounting estimates reports on cash basis accounting. We had no difficulties with management in the audit process, which I want to share with you as a Germanian board. And then this year, I think I did, congratulations to Heather and your team. Each of you, we find a few adjusting entries. We only found one minor audit adjustment during the audit process this year. So great job making sure things are classified in that great spot. I know Heather and her team was very diligent in making sure things are getting coded to the right area and corrected them as they see things that need correcting if an error does occur. That is all I have. I appreciate the opportunity to come and present this and present your results and get everything done by the ISBE deadline. Does anyone have any questions for me from reports they looked over or my report tonight?
Questions for Hope?
If you care. The activity funds have always been entirely a separate database called SBAA. So now what I'm going to do is follow the directions and actually include and put it, merge it somehow. I'll figure that one out. But, and then also for the ones where they did not have signatures, where you put in, place some procedures as well, so that in the future that they, they will find out on it. Because the thing is, with SBAA, was just the principal signing off, but I think Hope and her team kind of wanted it to come through central office as well. So we'll be doing that as well, with the new GASB 84.
I feel like years ago, activity funds were kind of like the wild, wild west of the country. Kind of slowly brought those more into mainstream. So it sounds like this is nearing completion of that journey.
Yeah, this will add some additional layers of, really protection there with a lot of funds flowing through those accounts.
Makes a lot of sense.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Supertet recommends the Board of Education approve the 2021 audit as presented. It's a motion to approve the audit. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there further discussion on the audit? I don't want to take a little call over this.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
McMurray?
Yes.
Key?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
McComb?
Yes. Heather, we're going to talk about the budget now.
I'm solo, because it's been on display now for 30 days.
Thank you.
Thanks, Hope. I appreciate you calling any questions and telling them to visit and everything, and it gives me an opportunity to look through other people's eyes as well, to see how things look. So I do appreciate it. The only thing that's changed since the hearing is there was an amendment to one of the grants, or just it wasn't a difference in the money, but just moved it from certain fund or certain account to another account. So nothing really has changed since the hearing last week. So I just, if you have any questions or anything, let me know. How do you get my computer, or, I mean, ask any questions, or? Thank you for sitting down and having conversations. Oh, no, I like trying to explain it all. As you can tell, I like to talk about it. So just be aware if you come in.
Strange, but okay.
You might be there a while. I don't think it's a leak. It's like, it's very thoughtful. Thank you.
The recommendation the board adopt, the 21, 22 budget as presented, is a motion to do that?
Some of it.
Is there a second? Second, is there further discussion on the budget or questions? Okay, you can roll call over this.
Key?
Yes.
McMurray?
Yes.
Hennessy?
No.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Schultz?
No.
Lamb?
Yes.
McComb?
Yes. And three, Heather, temporary transfers.
Oh, I'm still here.
You're still here. You don't go anywhere for a minute.
Temporary transfers, that is temporary and permanent, or something that, like what Hope was just mentioning, that's happening sometimes in the, in the activity funds. We just like to have a little approval, though, with our regular funds, on 10, 20, 30, or our operating funds. If we, for some reason, during the year, usually due to funding, so say the state case was late on something in one fund, but we have money in working cash, we can do a transfer so that we're not negative at the end of the month. That's what the temporary transfers are. Those are loans. So those are something at the end of the year that I pay back. So I just say, it's basically, it's a journal entry. I move from working cash to the one that accounts that needs the funds, and then at the end of the year, I move them back, or even that next month, if money comes through, as soon as money comes in. So that's just to be able to do that for every year if we need to. The only two loans, both temporary and permanent, that I put in there was for O&M, just simply because we have been short in O&M in the past. Again, I'm trying to divert some of those expenses. And again, it's just because it is solely based on the property taxes and we're not getting any state money or any other type of money in that account. The other one is transportation. Transportation is because our transportation claim was lower this last year, meaning that we are expected to get less money due to ridership. So I just wanted to put a safeguard in there. We are going to review that again, because there's another review, renew, you could review it for another period. We'll review it again, just to make sure we didn't miss anything. But I just want to be prepared in that account if in case there is not enough money to cover it. With the extra tier money, I did not put any permanent or temporary transfers in for education.
Okay, so the temporary transfer resolution, the recommendation is to approve resolution temporary transfers of working cash as presented. Is there a motion to do that?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion on temporary transfer resolution? Roll call over, please.
Lamb?
Yes.
Key?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
McMurray?
Yes.
Hennessy?
No.
McComb?
Yes. All right, now we have a permanent cash resolution.
Again, I want to be able to, at the end of the year, if needed, it's not mean I have to, but I want to be able to cover those same two funds, O&M and transportation, if needed. This last year, the only one I ended up doing out of the three that I had proposed was O&M. So I had to, I had proposed education, O&M, and transportation. Our transportation cost her way down, so I did not have to do that. And just because it ended up that way, I did not have to do it with education, but just to have that safeguard there. But I don't think we need to do it with education this year just because we had the extra tier money.
So the board has seen the resolution for the working cash funds. Supertet recommends the board approve that resolution. Is there a motion to do that?
Some of it.
Is there a second?
Second, Lamb.
Is there further discussion on that resolution or questions?
McMurray?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Hennessy?
No.
Key?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
McComb?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heather.
I think you're, you will sit down now. Congratulations. Next item is the eLearning Plan and Resolution. Dr. Romo.
Yes, so we have the hearing on this prior to the board meeting on the eLearning Plan, so I don't have anything new to present. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, there's a recommendation to approve the eLearning Plan and the resolution as presented. Is there a motion to do that? So is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions?
Nicole, the only question that I'm wondering about, and you might have some thought about, is the hours of the day for teacher contact. As a working parent, I'm wondering if there's a way to, and I don't know how this works with contract time, so I don't know if this is like an appropriate request. Is there a way to, I would hate for parents to think they can't contact a teacher because it's before nine o'clock, or, you know, if they need clarification on what their fourth grade is supposed to do, and then they need to go to work. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So like, I'm wondering, can we alter the time, or, I don't know.
So I, so just a couple of things on that, because thank you for contacting me to begin. I think we can definitely change the, to the teacher contract hours within there, especially, you know, at the, you know, through the day, the teachers would check their email throughout the contact time, and I hope that's absolutely fair. I think our teachers would be more than willing to do that. Especially, you know, at the end, you know, through the day, the teachers would check their email throughout the contact time. And I hope that's absolutely fair. And I think our teachers would be more than willing to do that. So I don't see that as a problem. But teachers are welcome, our parents are welcome to email or contact teachers at any time out. We do ask teachers to please disconnect in the evening and not return, you know, please don't be on all the time and spend time with their own families. But I think, you know, after you mentioned that, we're required to have a five hour day. And so that's why you'll see it as five and a half hours with the lunch built in for that. But I think in terms of expectations for returning emails to parents, I think that we can definitely do that for the contract time. So I can update that. Anything else?
Questions for Dr. Rom? Okay, then I'm going to roll call over this.
Hennessy?
No.
Schultz?
Yes.
Key?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Mc Murray?
Yes.
Mc Con?
Yes. Item six, adaptive pause plan for instruction. Dr. Rom.
Yes, so I just want to. There are two separate documents or one online. And so the adaptive pause, my hope is that we would never ever have to use it. But I thought it would be beneficial to our teachers and for parents to kind of understand what would be expected and what the day would look like should we have to do an emergency closure. This has to occur in through joint agreement with the health department that that is what's needed. And so this is slightly different than an emergency day. The expectation would be that if it's an adaptive pause, staff would be coming on site and therefore they would have internet access. Families would have the opportunity, you know, we would know that we were setting down to check out hot spots so that they too would have internet access. And so the plan then would look very similar to what our remote students experienced last year. We'd meet the five clock hours that are required, both at the junior high and high school. In the elementary, it looks just a little bit different because we don't want our little kids staring at the devices for the solid like five and a half hours. So they would follow a very similar schedule to what our elementary remote teachers did last year. They might have a morning meeting and do a lesson and then have a break where they're working independently or or doing some sort of activity not on the device. And then they would come back for another lesson and have some time away, come back for a lesson, have some time away. In between there, the teacher might be doing some small group instruction on Google classroom with various groups of students. But then also you can see that there would be for junior high and high school kids, like we had last year when we were on our set office hours. So if kids were struggling with skill or concept, they'd have a set time where they could reach out to those teachers and get some help and support. So questions about the shortened day? You don't know that we want kids on the devices for the entire period, but also again, we're probably not going to have a ton of notice that this is going to happen. And so it gives the teachers an opportunity in the morning to adjust, to take their, what was intended to be an in-person lesson and get it flipped around and ready to go remote with that. So this is not a requirement. It was just simply something that we put together, like I said, so parents and teachers would kind of know what the expectations were for the school year should it be needed.
There's a hope.
It is teachers, administrators, parents, everyone's hope that we will not need this.
Can you clarify under junior high? You have office hours for lunch and then it has office hours?
Uh, yeah, probably. Thanks. Um, yeah, it is. Right here. Yeah.
The only, or can I ask a question right now? Are you doing any more?
Um, kind of, we should have a motion on the floor. So there's a recommendation that we approve the adaptive pause plan for instruction. Is there a motion to do that? So is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right.
Um, so where it says the high school panels will be open for students to access like that, are we allowed, if we're on a COVID shutdown, are we allowed to have students in the building?
That's a great question. I think that's going to be a case by case.
Okay.
So I, it can, there can are a lot of different scenarios in which we could be shut down. So if we're able to open, that would be ideal. And like I said, staff would be reporting for work. So if a kid needed to come in, otherwise we do have the hotspots that are available for checkout. There are also then if there's a, if we go on this adaptive pause, get them a day to distribute devices to to the students in case required.
Okay.
I'm just curious, have we noticed any districts or going to the districts so far this year that have had this shut?
I would just rather have a plan and everybody know what's expected than not have a plan and be like, what are we going to do?
And this would be every day, right? Not a Tuesday, Friday.
Yeah, this would be Monday, Friday. That's a great question.
Okay, other questions? Okay, motion, second discussion, once time to vote, please.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Hennessy?
No.
Schultz?
You don't.
Mc Murray?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Key?
Yes.
Mc Con?
Yes. Question one oh seven, Dr. Rom.
All right, this is the latest batch of policy, five-year reviews and updates. And so this is the first reading and then next month would be the approval. And so I'm happy to answer any questions. I don't, I didn't see anything that's just really a massive change. They all seem to be either five-year reviews or just some minor legal references or minor wording changes.
The only question I had was in reference to Jeremy's previous proposal to policy six two sixty. You pulled up, I'm sorry, I'm so. Right? Isn't that one of them that you had suggested modifying during?
Yes.
Is that, is that in any way of?
That's my thing.
Sure, right, sure.
When I read through it, I thought the same thing.
What's the number again?
Six colon two sixty.
I'm sorry. Maybe did I did I mention that?
No, that's no. So in August, Dr. Hendricks had introduced some additional language for this policy. And actually, we met last week and talked about maybe putting that into a different but related policy. So I think that the the update here that we have for six colon two sixty doesn't impact what he introduced. Okay. Actually, just gives another option for curriculum. Yeah, by using the uniform grievance procedure or the curriculum objection form. Okay.
Okay, so when would you have that? Any other questions tonight?
Yeah, you know, I actually have kind of a concern about this press policy thing that we do. Because ever since I've come on board, we sort of treat these press policies like a given, like they're just some trivial thing that's given to us. And I'm not sure that many of us really look very carefully at what is being said. Because we're sort of told or out there or something that this is just something we should go through. And as I was reading through it, I noticed some of these policies. So in the press plus document that they give you, it gives which laws are changed because or which policies are changed because there's a law, which ones are administrative, and then this five-year review. And as I looked through these, one of the policies we have is two one thirty, the board superintendent relationship. And the policy that was added in on the five-year review suggested that we added a line to the beginning of the policy that said, the school board directs through policy, the superintendent in his or her charge of the administration of the district by delegating its authority to operate the district and provide leadership to its staff. And I have read our school code a couple of times. And so this is a familiar sounding thing to me. And there's more to the policy, but that was not changed. So I understand that the non-changed parts are important. But we had this footnote that said that this policy was updated in response to a five-year review. And then it said statutory text previously in the footnotes was moved to the policy as a result of the press advisory board feedback. So this press advisory board decided that this should be in our policy. And so I went back to the law and looked it up to see what the law actually said. And the law doesn't say the same thing as what they put in the statute. And so the beginning starts the same. That's why I recognized it, right? The first phrase was the same. But what's they suggest for a policy is that we say by delegating the authority to operate the district. But the law said, including considering without without including without limitation, considering the recommendation of the superintendent concerning the budget, the building plans, the location of sites, the selection, retention and dismissal of employees, the selection of textbooks, instructional material, and courses of study. And then it went on and the rest was the same, right? But there was this change in there. And so then I went and thought, well, maybe I missed something. So I went to the ISB and I took the training on press one oh seven, right? They do a training where they explain to you these different things. And it was not in there at all. They skipped over that policy. And so then I decided to think who is actually proposing these policies? And it's the press advisory board. So I went and figured out who's on the press advisory board. And I have a list of people that I won't read out loud because it's long, but they have their playbook of them. And every one of them is either an attorney or a superintendent or assistant superintendent or former superintendent. So it's a group of superintendents and attorneys that are putting these forward. And so while it happens, there's that this policy seems to say that the board is going to delegate their authority to run the district to the superintendent, which is problematic to me, just as a note. A bigger problem that I sort of occurred is that we have someone somewhere else writing policies. And we're not even looking at them before we adopt them. We're technically looking at them, but we're not really thinking, I don't have the time to do this for every policy on the list, right? To look into it, look at the law, watch a video. And so I feel as though we might need to be more judicious with how we just vote these policies through without even looking at this. And consider what is happening because what's essentially happened here is that some lawyers and superintendents who are Chicago and Springfield are making a policies here and that may or may not reflect from her, right? I mean, I don't know what their values are. I don't know what they're thing they're trying to achieve in a school district is. I just know that they're making policies and we sort of have this feeling that these are the policies we for sure should adopt. And then let's consider other policies. And so I just have a lot of concern about just adopting these policies without really looking at them. And this one in particular, I would suggest that we remove because I'm just not sure that when the law says that the superintendent should be recommending to us things about sites, buildings, budgets, staff, curriculum, instructional materials that we should take away and replace that with, we just delegate everything to the superintendent. I think the board should keep their authority to consider these things. I think the superintendent should certainly recommend on these things. That's what the law says. But I I feel as though we need to really think about this and maybe take this policy out. And so I know that lots of people think, but I object to things that I'm being an obstructionist. But I really feel like I'm just doing research and looking at what's in front of me. And I just, I'm just not sure I want us to say that we give away our authority.
So Colleen, I I happened to pull out the foundational principles of effective government to the association of school boards. And it says, the board delegates authority. The board delegates authority to the superintendent to manage a school district and provide leadership for staff. Such authority is communicated through more policies that delegate districts and foreign operating parameters. I for one do not want to take on the job of superintendent. We we pay our administrators to do that. So I guess I'm confused by what you don't want to validate. I'm not about to validate the district. I don't have the authority to run the district. I don't have any knowledge to run the district. I don't think any of us is capable of doing the overarching part of this district. So I guess I need to explain more about what you mean by.
Well, I think there's two points, right? One is that there's legal things that have to be in our policy, correct? And there's other things that that get put in by this advisory board that are not necessarily legal requirements. And then number two, your second point is that you feel like this policy is, and you can correct me if I'm wrong here, but this policy is a little bit too general and also just delegating those tasks that we mentioned before to the superintendent without board approval, correct?
Correct. So certainly let me, you're totally correct. Let me be very clear. I don't think that we should run a school. We're not the superintendent. We have a good superintendent over here who will run our school. What I'm saying is that, kind of what Jeremy said, there's things that we still as a board are responsible for that. I mean, there's a reason the law says that we direct the superintendent through policy and that we consider her or his recommendations on all of these things. So there's a difference between day-to-day running the school and being the body that approves the recommendations of the superintendent. And that's the way that the community has input into our schools. That's the reason we have a school board is because we're supposed to be overseeing what happens in the school district. And the community is supposed to come and we're supposed to reflect what we need in our community. If we didn't have individual things in education, we could just get rid of all the boards. Someone in Springfield could write a bunch of rules and that's how everything would be.
I don't disagree with you. I think what I'm confused about is what in this is making you think that the board will have a say in what the superintendent brings forward? Because it says right here, the school board directs through policy, through policy. So if we have policy in here that says that the superintendent needs to bring forward as like D or votes, the board votes. I I guess I'm confused by, it feels like you're kind of thinking that maybe this is taking away the voice of our local school board. Because some lawyers and some superintendents put it together, but it's also best practice as stated by the association of school boards. And it's very similar to what we already do. So that's why I'm confused. I'm confused why this specific language would make you think that we would somehow lose the ability to keep our school district what we want our school district to be. By delegating that to the superintendent, by delegating the authority to, I'm sorry.
No, no. First of all, the ISB is a lobbying organization that's run by superintendents, right? So I'm not sure if everything from the ISB is something we should take. Like, for example, the ISB, the other, in the past few months, strongly advocated that we reduce the amount of recess. the amount of recess our kids have at school. There was a policy suggesting that kids have 60 minutes of recess in K to eight, the time that they were moving. And the IASB advocated to reduce that. And so now we have the law that we have, which is 30 minutes K five. And they consider that a win. But just because a lobbying group decides that that's what they want, that doesn't make it right or doesn't make it what I don't listen to. So I don't, I don't agree with that just because the IASB says something is best practice. I think that it's, the part of the problem is that they said, "We're moving the statutory language into the policy." When I look at the statutory language, that's not what they moved into the policy. They said something too broad, like, "We delegate our authority to the superintendent." And I want to be abundantly clear. This has nothing to do with our particular superintendent, right? Our particular superintendent has even indicated that she's intending to retire in a couple of years and enjoy her life probably. And then we'll have other superintendents, right? So this is not about a person or that we don't want someone to do some job. It's a, this is a policy for our whole district. That if we say, we delegate away, if we say, "By delegating our authority to operate the district to her," that's different than saying, "And we're going to take her recommendations to consider," which means we still make the last choice, right? So one of those things in there is curriculum. And it's not lost on me that this is coming at a time when, in the national and state environment, curriculum has really come to the forefront. And so in this time, when people are in turmoil and very divided about this, we're coming in with something that takes away the wording, "The board will consider the recommendation," and replaces that wording with, "The board will delegate their authority to run the schools" to the superintendent. I just...
So earlier, you made a comment that we're going to be getting into specifics. I'm going to redo the definition that they have in this language that apparently is coming from the same people. "Delegates Authority to," quote-unquote, "means empowering the superintendent and staff to pursue board ends single-handedly and without hesitation. A board that does or redoes staff work disempowers the staff. High levels of superintendent and staff accountability require high levels of delegation. Delegation is difficult for anyone accustomed to direct action. However, to appropriately stay focused on the big picture and avoid confusing staff, members of the school board must discipline themselves to trust their superintendent and staff and not involve themselves in the day-to-day operations." So delegating authority doesn't mean that the board will not have a say in what happens. It means we trust the person who we hired and currently employ to lead the school district. And if she's not doing a decent job, we won't have a conversation about that when it comes to our plan evaluation. But to have a board sitting here saying, "We are going, we do not delegate authority to the superintendent," that is saying, "We're going to be getting our work done." And that's not our job. It's the superintendent's job.
I'm not suggesting that we take away our delegation. This is someone adding this in to the way we view things.
So why, so why can you not leave that in there? You're saying you don't want it, you don't want it in there because you don't like that it delegates authority to the superintendent?
Because I think, as Jeremy said, it's too general, and it replaces the statutory language. Like, why don't we, if they say we're going to put the statutory language in, why don't we take the statutory language and put it in?
Cheryl, you've not had time to provide any of this, probably. Any thoughts you have on interpretation here?
I mean, certainly, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. I can certainly try to weigh in on this. I mean, I think that probably, as you all know, it's not uncommon for school districts to use press as a starting point for most policies for the reason that I believe one of you mentioned, that otherwise it would take you a lot of time and effort and likely a lot of financial resources to work with an outside law firm to confirm that every policy you have is complying with the law. So it's usually done as a starting point. But that doesn't mean that there are portions of it that don't work for your particular district, that those cannot be modified. The reason the language is typically not included in a policy is because it's not usually user-friendly. Most of the sources are not known to be user-friendly language and it works in practice. So that's why likely there's not actual statutory language included in the policy itself. I would have to look at it more closely, but that's typically why.
I think there's a difference, though, between, we can all read, "The superintendent will make recommendations that the board will then make decisions on." Substituting that with, "Will delegate their authority to..." I don't think that's difficult language to understand. I think there is a difference, and the responsibility still lies with the school board. And we have delegated authority, for example, to the attorneys, to the superintendent. And I, as a school board member, kind of feel like I'm pulling my hair out just to make sure that I understand how many touches we have with the attorneys and what the attorney says. Was one of my concerns about using that language in the beginning when we did make the vote to delegate that to the superintendent. I, at the same time, see lawyer bills to the tune of $300,000 a year. And then I see bills that also indicate that we are touching these attorneys a lot. As a board member, I'm responsible for approving bills and understanding. I think delegating authority takes away an important check in balance. It makes it too easy for a single person to make decisions and go down a path with no one providing a check to that power. So the idea of a school board is to be the check to the balance. It's supposed to work together. But when you turn over your authority and decision-making power to a single person, that can lead you down a slippery slope. Now, I think when you understand that the statutory language leaves the fundamental balance of power in place, and what we've been presented with from press shifts that power, that that is something that we should be discussing as school board and deciding if that's something that we want to do. I don't like taking anyone's blind suggestion about what the policy should be for our district. And then when you do more research into the organizations making those suggestions, there is pause for cause, cause for pause to understand what the motivations of those entities might be. And we should take that into our decision-making when we adopt policies. And we should still retain our authority to tweak policies as we see fit for our community.
Again, I'm going to ask, what in this is saying that this is turning all decision-making power over to superintendent?
When you delegate your authority...
And you're nominating the voice of the board of the education.
When you delegate your authority to someone, that person can then go make all of the decisions that they want to without...
You're directing with my policy. If we have policy that says, "You need to bring this back for a vote," yes, she needs to have the authority to make a decision on a day-to-day basis without coming back to us for sampling Google on everything.
And our policies give very clear indications of how that is done. And that's why we have a whole host of policies. And so we don't need to ever delegate our entire authority to that. We have a set of policies in place that direct how that is to be done for almost every scenario that we can think of because we have a broad set of policies. So it is unnecessary to take the step to say, "We will delegate everything to you outside of what's already written."
Okay.
What's the statutory language say again?
The statutory language says, "Including without limitation, considering the recommendations of the superintendent, considering the budget, building plans, locations of sites, selection, retention, and dismissal of employees, and the selection of textbooks, instructional material, and courses of studies."
So would it be your recommendation when we approve this next month that we change the press language to the actual statutory language?
I would think that would be a good choice for us, that we would have it actually reflect the statutory language.
I don't have a problem using the actual statutory language.
I'd like to see it.
Yeah.
Is that in our school code?
It is. I can...
Or even, I can put it up. Is it, is it the 510-16.7?
It is 105 I L C S, five slash ten, dash sixteen point seven. So if you'd like, I can back that up right here. She's...
I would love that. I'm here right now.
Very discussed under Press 107. Yep. You should take a break for about 90 minutes. Spend a little more than that. So we'll take a 50-minute break. And when we come back, we'll start with agenda item number eight. We're out for the session. Down you went here, you still on break?
Yeah, I'm back.
Okay, very good. Alright, so we are back in session. Uh, we're at agenda item number eight. Before we begin, I want to remind everyone in the room that, you know, we are under a mask mandate right now in public education, that you should respectfully wear your mask, or respectfully excuse yourself from your, if you would. Alright, Sonny.
Okay, so, uh, Dr. Hall pulled up policy two two forty up on the screen. I was hoping, I, I was asking questions about this to Dr. Hall, and, um, we kind of felt like maybe it would be better as a board discussion or conversation. So I need, I was hoping that if we could talk together, we might be able to clarify that first section, says policy development, um, in the interest of efficiency. So my thought process is, when I have a four thirty AM, what do we call, like many people, and spend the entire day with students, and then I come and have a board meeting that lasts until midnight, my brain is mushed by midnight, and I don't feel like I'm really fairly assessing any decisions, and I'm making decisions that maybe I'm not able to be full thought to or coherent thought to. So with that in mind, if we could make our meetings a little more efficient, a little shorter, um, I'm wondering if this policy might be able to, to help us with that. And the most recent policies that have been, um, proposed, or, uh, as new policies or revised policies, I'm wondering how this might impact the time we're spending in meetings. So it says, anyone may propose new policies, changes to existing policies, or elimination of existing policies. Staff suggestions should be processed with the superintendent, which makes sense. Suggestions from all others should be made to the board president or superintendent. And then, it lists all the different things that the superintendent is responsible for, um, and, including getting advice and suggestions from people who it would affect, and then having policy recommendations drafted in the written form for board deliberation. So, I guess my interpretation of this, and this is why I want to have a conversation, because it seems like maybe we're interpreting this differently. My interpretation of this is, you have a new policy idea, or you have a revision to a policy, you're going to take that to either Max, as the board president, or whoever the board president is. And, or, and or Lindsay, and say, here's, here's what I'm wondering about, here's what I'm thinking, here's what I'm noticing. And then the superintendent in a conversation, I mean, perhaps it's a two-minute conversation, that Lindsay's able to say, oh, well, we actually have a policy about that here, or the reason this policy is the way it is is because of X, Y, Z. And then, when it comes to that first reading, all of that extra stuff is already done. Does that make sense? So something where it doesn't necessarily have to turn into, you know, like, like, Jeremy, when you brought your first, when you brought one of the policies, I said, well, isn't this covered under whatever policy? And you're like, I don't know, I don't, I don't have a policy. Like, to have that beforehand would have helped with our conversation. Or, like, with number three, having policy recommendations drafted into written form for board deliberation, that's not, that wasn't done. I mean, like, Holly, you had great thoughts on your policies that you wanted to propose, but that didn't come from the superintendent, that came from you for deliberation, which is a great starting point. So I just need, I need clarification. Like, are we, are we following this? Are we modifying? Is there a way to make it more efficient so that we're not spending hours at a board table talking about policies that maybe we could talk about beforehand, and then bring to the table our, like, already, you know, kind of thoughtful? Does that make sense?
Well, I think, I, I feel what you're, you're saying, uh, the, in my instance, and, and, I don't know if it's generalizable or not, but, um, that, uh, I had mentioned those topics before, but never had any detailed discussions with Lindsay about it. And unfortunately, I had some other things to deal with in August that kind of got in the way of having things a little more, uh, in order, but there was still the material there, the, um, the actual thought of, this is what I think needs to happen, and having the board have a discussion. And I didn't think we spent too much time on it at the last meeting, I don't, it was probably ten minutes to last, probably on the two policies. Uh, so, and then, uh, we've done some additional work on it since then. So I think, yes, you could do it beforehand, you could do it in between that first and second reading, uh, after getting some feedback from the board in general as well, too. So I, I think it's honestly flexible, but, um, I agree that, that the superintendent needs to be part of that processing part at some point before it gets to that second reading. Um, I mean, ideally, yes, before the first reading.
Well, and I, like, I'm, I'm looking again at the having policy recommendations drafted into written form for board deliberation, is that, that board deliberation would happen at the first reading.
Right.
So in order to have the policy recommendation drafted in written form, the superintendent would need to know about it before the first meeting.
Right.
First reading, I'm sorry, first reading. I, I mean, I guess I just, I, I just need to know, like, are we following this? Is there a different way to do it so that we can be more efficient? I, I mean, that's why I want to have a conversation. Does something in this need to change? I don't know.
I'm fine with this. I mean, here's the deal. Uh, it depends on who you are when you ask for things on the agenda, and whether or not you can get a policy put forth. So some people, as board members, have more success when they ask for something to be added than others, and it's very frustrating to be the other who continues to ask, and no matter what hurdle I jump through or ask, the, I am denied the opportunity. So you are left with trying to put something on paper to get in front of the board. There's no other way to do that. We just have a policy committee. I sat on it. Uh, if we're looking for efficiency gains, then that policy committee could certainly be reinstated. Uh, having said that, uh, we would have policy committee meetings, people would make, come to consensus in that meeting, we would come to the board meeting, and be overridden. So there's no real efficiency gain if that policy committee isn't used for the purposes of coming with a recommendation that's going to be accepted by the rest of the board. Um, we have lots of policies that we don't follow unless we want to. So I don't think the problem is with what's written in any policy versus any other policy, is that it's not followed consistently. And that gets us into trouble. It causes bad feelings among board members, causes us to fight more meetings, it's more of our meeting time discussing how we're going to get topics on the agenda and in front of us for discussion than actually discussing those topics. I mean, I don't know. I mean, to me, this says should be brought to the board president. Bringing to the board president the policy that you want as written is, is following what is written here.
But it's not, because it says that the superintendent is going to be bringing those policy recommendations drafted in the written form.
Well, it says the staff suggestions should be processed through the superintendent. Suggestions from all others should be made to the board president or the superintendent. It doesn't say you can't come with a policy in the form you'd like it to be. Uh, I read through these policies lots of times, I understand the structure of the policy, and you could say, if you, if you needed to look consistent, we should follow the policies and the outlines that we have them, policy development, policy, I mean, there are ways that we could have board members bring a policy that looks more consistent with what we have here, but in actuality, most of these policies are not written by us. We just adopt what somebody else wrote. So I don't know if these are the most effective policies. They don't seem to be, in my opinion, working for us. I don't feel like we're making a lot of progress. And so adopting what the I A S B and press says, and the way that they want to get things done, doesn't seem to be working for us.
Is this a press policy?
Yes.
Okay. So, can we, can I, I'm so sorry, can I ask about the, the, um, policy committees?
Yes.
Again, um, I know that we haven't done any committees, uh, as of right now, right, since, at least since we said, um, one.
We've not had a committee this year.
Um, i- is that something worth reconsidering? Is that, I mean, I know, I know what you're talking about, I remember sitting in that, those meetings with you and Lori Larson, and I, I remember that. So is that, would that be something worth reconsidering?
Have to function super differently.
Okay.
Right? I mean, it was not. I, I mean, that pretty supposes that we are going to accept board members being able to bring policies that are outside of what is brought to us by press. So.
Well, I do see that, though.
Well, but we are, but, but Jeremy brought his, and then I think that's what spurred this discussion, is that we don't like that the board is bringing policies in the way that we're bringing them forward.
Are you asking why I want this on the agenda?
No, I'm just saying, in my experience, what I believe is that when a board member takes it upon themselves to create a policy, we spend more time discussing whether or not they brought the policy in the right way, and do we want to discuss it this way, do we do the merits of the policy? So in order for anything to move forward, I believe that this board would have to accept the premise that any board member can bring a policy in written form for discussion to the board, and we won't argue about how it was brought, we would start talking about it on its merits.
So, and I, I think that's why I wanted to bring this, because I feel like there's a discord there, and I want to, um, honestly, what I was hoping is that upon our, um, open office into the board, that we would be able to have a board self-evaluation, but after putting out thirty dates, and nobody having a single mention date where everybody was available, we can't do that now until March. And so my hope was that what you're saying, the end, um, would be part of a, a conversation, kind of a stepping stone, stepping stone to what do we hold true to as board members? Specifically with this, the reason I asked for this to be on the agenda is because I feel like, unlike what you're saying, I don't think it's an issue of people bringing policies, board members bringing policies to the table. I think that's, I don't, I don't have any issue with that at all. I think my concern is that that is happening without any kind of even acknowledgement or conversation with the person who runs the organization. And so to me, I, I just wonder, like, we have this in place, do we not want this in place anymore? Like, do we want to say we don't need to have a conversation with the superintendent before we bring a policy forward? Like, I feel like if I was going to propose something to a business, and I was on the board of directors of this business, I would go to the CEO, and I would say, excuse me, can you please, I, I, I would like to see this X, Y, Z happen. Can you please explain to me why your handbook has this such and such policy in it, so that I can better understand what I need to change or adapt or adjust? So it's not the issue of people bringing policies, I don't think that's the issue at all. I'm just feeling like there's a disconnect between the pal, the, the, the process that is outlined here and the process that is happening. Does that make sense?
It does, and that actually happens in a lot of areas. So for example, we had agreed that if a board member asks a week in advance to have something on the agenda, that it would be put on the agenda, but that doesn't happen.
Why did you agree to that? Because there's more policy that's certain with the president.
We agreed that agenda requests needed to be in a week in advance. Whenever I scheduled a request, it was going to have the agenda. A lot of them end up on the agenda. Some of them we end up handling in other ways that are, are more efficient or more timely, or fit with what's going on. This is a business meeting. We tend to handle more of the businessy things at this meeting. Other meetings are study sessions. Those are when we like to do more of our in-depth analysis, and, and, and maybe some problem solving or, or more discussion. So just because someone comes forward a week early and says, I'd like to talk about this, doesn't mean it goes on that next agenda. That, that is the deadline, you're correct. We did establish that. So I think maybe there's a disconnect there. And, and again, that's not an attempt to shut stuff off, but it is an attempt to try to channel stuff in a way that makes, makes it best and most efficient to us to handle.
Well.
We talked about, Sonny brought up the, the, uh, the board self-evaluation, that we tried to schedule months ago, and nobody's got any available dates. We've got that on now for March. I am hopeful, hopeful, some of this procedure stuff, we can all get together on a night that we planned to map out and chart some courses on, some way we handle things, and talk about it those nights, that night. I, I don't know if that would come off that way or not. Uh, a few years ago when we tried it, it was a dis, I, I was lost by it as a dismal parent. But we're going, we're going to give that another shot, and I would encourage everyone, um, to plan to do some really hard work and discussion that night about how we can move forward on some things, particularly process things, I'm sorry, interrupting.
Well, I, actually, I, we can be in a sense, go ahead. Uh, I lost my train of thought, okay, I, I, if, if you, if you think about it, it hurts me. Um, I do, I think maybe we should revisit the, the policy committee idea, perhaps, because I feel like if we could make it a little more efficient within these longer, within these board meetings, I feel like we could actually get more on the agenda if we have more efficient processes that are moving us through the business that needs to get done. Do you remember what you guys said?
It, yeah.
Oh, sorry, I was going to die.
So when I read this, it seems like one of the implications here is sort of like what to happen for people outside of this process, right? Because it starts by saying, anyone can propose a policy. So anyone here can propose a policy, anyone staff can propose a policy. But sort of, in my mind, gives this idea, like, if you're outside the system, how did you get a policy in, right? Which is different than if you're a board member, because as we just talked about, the board members direct the district through a policy, right? So it's like a different situation if you're already on the board, although we do give the policies to Max and Lindsay to put in the, um, agenda, but we certainly don't ever do this policy with press, right? I mean, none of these press one oh sevens were written by the superintendent. They were all written by press and brought to us. So I think there's a differential between, we don't just want anyone off the street to say here.
No other way to do that. We just have a policy committee. I sat on it. If we're looking for efficiency gains, then that policy committee could certainly be reinstated. Having said that, we would have policy committee meetings. People would make come to consensus in that meeting. We would come to the board meeting and be overridden. So there's no real efficiency gain if that policy committee isn't used for the purposes of coming with a recommendation that's going to be accepted by the rest of the board. We have lots of policies that we don't follow unless we want to. So I don't think the problem is with what's written in any policy versus any other policy is that it's not followed consistently. And that gets us into trouble. It causes bad feelings among board members. Causes us to fight more meetings. It's more of our meeting time discussing how we're going to get topics on the agenda and in front of us for discussion than actually discussing those topics. I mean, I don't know. I mean, to me, this says should be brought to the board president. Bringing to the board president the policy that you want as written is following what is written here.
But it's not because it says that the superintendent is going to be bringing those policy recommendations directly into written form.
Well, it says the staff suggestion should be processed through the superintendent. Suggestions from all others should be made to the board president or the superintendent. It doesn't say you can't come with a policy in the form you'd like it to be. I read through these policies lots of times. I understand the structure of a policy. You could say if you needed to look at consistent, we should follow the policies and the outlines that we have them. Policy development, I mean, there are ways that we could have board members bring a policy that looks more consistent with what we have here. But in actuality, most of these policies are not written by us. We just adopt what somebody else wrote. So I don't know if these are the most effective policies. They don't seem to be, in my opinion, working for us. I don't feel like we're making a lot of progress. And so adopting what the IASB and press says and the way that they want to get things done doesn't seem to be working for us.
Is this a press policy?
Yes.
Okay. So can we, can I, I'm so sorry. Can I ask about the policy committees?
Yes.
Again, I know that we haven't done any committees as of right now, right? Since, at least since we said one. Is that something worth reconsidering? Is that, I mean, I know, I know what you're talking about. I remember sitting in those meetings with you and Lori Larson, and I remember that. So is that, would that be something worth reconsidering?
Have to function super differently.
Okay.
Right? I mean, it was not. I mean, that pretty supposes that we are going to accept board members being able to bring policies that are outside of what is brought to us by press. So it's, well, but we are, but Jeremy brought his. And then I think that's what spurred this discussion is that we don't like that the board is bringing policies in the way that we're bringing them forward.
Are you asking why I want this on the agenda?
No, I'm just saying, in my experience, what I've gleaned is that when a board member takes it upon themselves to create a policy, we spend more time discussing whether or not they brought the policy in the right way and do we want to discuss it this way, do we do the merits of the policy? So in order for anything to move forward, I believe that this board would have to accept the premise that any board member can bring a policy in written form for discussion to the board. And we won't argue about how it was brought. We would start talking about it on its merits.
So, and I, I think that's why I wanted to bring this. Because I feel like there's a discord there. And I want to, honestly, what I was hoping is that upon our open office into the board, that we would be able to have a board self-evaluation. But after putting out 30 dates and nobody having a single mention date where everybody was available, we can't do that now until March. And so my hope was that what you're saying then would be part of a conversation, kind of a stepping stone, stepping stone to what do we hold true to as board members? Specifically with this, the reason I asked for this to be on the agenda is because I feel like, unlike what you're saying, I don't think it's an issue of people bringing policies, board members bringing policies to the table. I think that's, I don't, I don't have any issue with that at all. I think my concern is that that is happening without any kind of even acknowledgement or conversation with the person who runs the organization. And so to me, I just wonder, like, we have this in place. Do we not want this in place anymore? Like, do we want to say we don't need to have a conversation with the superintendent before we bring a policy forward? Like, I feel like if I was going to propose something to a business and I was on the board of directors of this business, I would go to the CEO and I would say, excuse me, can you please, I, I would like to see this X, Y, Z happen. Can you please explain to me why your handbook has this such and such policy in it? So that I can better understand what I need to change or adapt or adjust. So it's not the issue of people bringing policies. I don't think that's the issue at all. I'm just feeling like there's a disconnect between the process that is outlined here and the process that is happening. Does that make sense?
It does, and that actually happens in a lot of areas. So for example, we had agreed that if a board member asks, we can advance, to have something on the agenda, then it would be put on the agenda. But that doesn't happen.
Why didn't you agree to that? Because there's more policy that says that the president.
We agreed that agenda requests needed to be in a week in advance. Whenever a decision was made to request, it was going to have the agenda. A lot of them end up on the agenda. Some of them we end up handling in other ways that are more efficient or more timely or fit with what's going on. This is a business meeting. We tend to handle more of the businessy things at this meeting. Other meetings are study sessions. Those are when we like to do more of our in-depth analysis and maybe some problem solving or more discussion. So just because someone comes forward a week early and says, I'd like to talk about this, doesn't mean it goes on that next agenda. That is the deadline. You're correct. We did establish that. So I think maybe there's a disconnect there. And again, that's not an attempt to shut stuff off, but it is an attempt to try to channel stuff in a way that makes it best and most efficient to handle.
Well.
We talked about, Sonny brought up the board self-evaluation that we tried to schedule months ago. And nobody's got any available dates. We've got that on now for March. I am hopeful, some of this procedure stuff, we can all get together on a night that we planned to map out and chart some courses on, some way we handle things, and talk about it those nights, that night. I don't know if that will come off that way or not. Few years ago when we tried it, it was, I was lost by it as a dismal parent. But we're going to give that another shot. And I would encourage everyone to plan to do some really hard work and discussion that night about how we can move forward on some things, particularly process things. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Well, I actually, we can be honest. Go ahead. I lost my train of thought on this. Okay, I, if you think about it, I do, I think maybe we should revisit the policy committee idea, perhaps. Because I feel like if we could make it a little more efficient within these longer, within these board meetings, I feel like we could actually get more on the agenda if we have more efficient processes that are moving us through business that needs to get done. Do you remember what you guys said? Oh, sorry, I was going to die.
So when I read this, it seems like one of the implications here is sort of like what to happen for people outside of this process, right? Because it starts by saying anyone can propose a policy. So anyone here can propose a policy, anyone staff can propose a policy. But sort of, in my mind, gives this idea, like, if you're outside the system, how did you get a policy in, right? Which is different than if you're a board member. Because as we just talked about, the board members direct the district through policy, right? So it's like a different situation if you're already on the board. Although we do give the policies to Max and Lindsay to put in the agenda. But we certainly don't ever do this policy with press, right? I mean, none of these press 107s were written by the superintendent. They were all written by press and brought to us. So I think there's a differential between, we don't just want anyone off the street to say, here, here's the policy, right? And so I think that's one of the differentials as well.
Thank you. That's, that's our point. I have a last question. Is this something that would be relevant to a board self-evaluation next?
I think so.
Okay.
I think so.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
I mean, I guess what I will say, though, is that I don't think we can put. It seems to me like what, one of the downfalls of having the policy committee was that it was almost like a veto. If the policy committee didn't want to take it on, the policy didn't make its way forward. If we're going to wait till the board evaluation, we shouldn't be stopping things like Jeremy bringing policy forward.
Oh, I understand.
Doesn't stop the business. I'm just trying to understand, you know, until then, I think the idea that a board member who is responsible for implementing policy, it is appropriate for board members to bring policy forward. If someone from the community, as Colleen pointed out, wants to bring something forward, it's also appropriate. There's just a different avenue for that. Because it has to go through different checkpoints. So as long as we are not suggesting that we will stop the business of.
Did that come across?
No, I'm just, I'm just, it was just when we said March is the. But I think you sent an email that said, let's not have any policies until we need it in March.
Well, I wondered if we could have this conversation, this conversation, before new policies came up. And I don't know whether, I mean, nothing came up before then, but. And so I just want a clarification on this conversation. And I think going into board self-evaluation, I think this is a good baseline to have. But no, I never intended it for it to be a comment about not bringing. So thank you for pointing that.
Next, I have this curriculum discussion. And I want to share a couple of things that I know a couple of board members have wanted to talk about, some curriculum issues. One thing I want to talk about, and this, this came out earlier, is what are instructional materials? And as I was referencing earlier, that we argue about semantics. Well, I don't know if this is semantics or not. I think it's important if we're saying that the board has to approve instructional materials, what are the materials the board expects to approve? Because I sense at this point in history, people are referring to materials that historically have not come before the board for approval. And so we need to be, I think, really clear on what we're classifying as instructional materials and what we're not. And I think if everybody was on the same page there, if nothing else, there would be a lot less frustration questions about what we're approving and what we're not approving. So I think it's important to have that discussion. The other thing I'd like is for Lindsay and Nicole, if they'd like, if they've got anything, to give us an update on where we're at in the process. I think it was Jeremy and, and I think either Nicole or Dr. Hall mentioned earlier, there are some things that we are moving on. I know there were some comments earlier, in public comment, that, you know, we've not gotten back. There's nothing that's been done. And I guess I'll go back to one of my analogies I like to use. As an individual, you know, I grew up on a lake, so I use lake analogies. And as an individual, you know, you can go out on a jet ski. You can spin that thing on a dime. You can start and stop on hurry. You can weave and bob and do everything. And then after a while, you know, maybe, maybe you take on a partner in life. Maybe there's children. You're more like a speedboat, right? You can't turn the thing on a dime anymore. But speedboats can be relatively maneuverable and move pretty quick. And the bigger your family unit becomes, maybe the harder, the bigger boat you need, the harder it is to turn that. Well, the speedboat is just a lot of competition, right? It doesn't start very fast. It doesn't stop very fast. It doesn't spin very fast. And there's a lot of people on the boat that we need to bring along with us. Because if we don't bring them along with us, they feel frustrated and they feel lost. And they tend to want to jump overboard. And we use that, okay? Whether we're talking about parents or whether we're talking about staff or whoever. So a lot of times, things do not progress as fast as we might like. So I know there's some things going on. I don't know if we can get an update on any of those tonight or not. But first of all, instructional material. What board, I guess, as you read the guideline that says we're going to approve instructional material, what are you looking to approve?
So in, in opposition to curriculum, right? So like, it says we approve curriculum and it says we approve instructional material. Like, those are two separate things. I mean, first of all, we do have a definition of that. But apart from the definition, in terms of instructional material, my vision of that is that the content that's given to students will be approved. So if the student is doing something in the classroom that's being used to instruct the student and teach the student, then it's instructional material. Like textbooks, like the reading books, like all those things that are being used as instructional materials.
I'm just going to play devil's advocate here so I can give clarification.
Sure.
I'm a teacher on teaching vocabulary. And I get this brilliant idea that I'm going to do a word puzzle that shows vocabulary. That focuses on this root, so this month's vocabulary words. And I create that and use that in my classroom. Where does that go for approval? Or does.
Well, so it's different under, I mean, there's two things in a policy, right? One is what the parents have a right to see. And the other is what the board has to approve. We both use instructional material. In my opinion, just my opinion, what we talked about before would help us with approving instructional materials. So having, I think you call them bumpers, right? So certain things where we say, in lieu of you bringing that worksheet to us specifically, right? In these particular grades, these are sort of the guidelines we have for which you don't have to do this, right? And I think we have intelligent enough people working in the district to understand what a bumper and a guideline is, right? And then we don't have to actually look at the specific worksheet. But here's the problem. When kids get books that have sex scenes in them or 91 uses of the F-word, like, we have to acknowledge that that's a different situation. And we can't throw that out because we're going to have a straw man of what do we do with the worksheet, right? You have to have the idea of what are we going to do? And it looks different in different grades. So in the young grades, obviously, they're sticking those books in those baggies and they're passing them out. The bumpers would be more effective, I believe, in that situation. But when you get to junior high and high school, you're not using that many books, right? So that those books could come and be approved, especially if they're a more controversial nature for the parents.
So as of, I just want to make sure I'm hearing what you just explained or understanding. And as opposed to, because I, I just brainstormed very quickly the list of what I thought instructional materials were. And includes textbooks, reading in mass series, libraries in classrooms, library books in our media centers, literature libraries, lit circle books, internet sites, articles, handouts, any other supplementary materials such as pictures, maps, posters, bulletin boards, music selections for band inquire, videos, guest speakers, substitute teach plans, and maybe even lesson plans, be considered instructional materials. And there was an agenda required for Nicole and I to bring all instructional materials to the board for this meeting to get approved prior to teachers using them in my classrooms this fall. And short of having a definition of that, I'm not sure what to bring. I know historically what has happened. And if the board wants to move away from that or have a different definition or process about what comes to the board, that's fine. We just need to know what it is. But again, just clear, so for my own clarification, as opposed to bringing things like this to the board, which I would hope is not really what you mean, because that would represent just massive overreach in micromanagement, that you're talking more about, you're talking about instead having guidelines that as long as things are within those guidelines, then the board will need to see that. Am I, is that? I'm not trying to put words in your mouth. I'm just trying to understand.
I'm just, I'm not trying to prescribe. I'm just starting the conversation.
I'm trying to see.
No, no, I'm just saying, I'm not very, I didn't sit and think about this ahead of time to have a prescribing of what I'm saying. It seems like in young grades, that seems more appropriate to say. Or maybe at the young grades, it's more in terms of, here's a library of things that we don't use in terms of books, right? I don't know. What I do know is that it seems appropriate to consider instructional materials to be novels that kids are reading handed at school. Like, I know that, I don't know where the line is, but I know that for me, that falls into instructional material. If they're saying to a kid, you have to read this, we're going to have a test, or we're going to have this, that that is instructional material, right? And we've had a lot of people have issues. And it just seems that that's in that group.
So most of the, most of the concern here has been driven by specific items, right? Textbooks, we historically have approved. I, I, I think we all get that. I think from my, just trying to watch all this unfold and understand what's happening, it appears to me what has sparked most controversy has been novels and reading materials. Now, not that some, not that there couldn't be inappropriate other things from time to time, but that seems to be the bulk of the concern. And I, and in my mind, you're, I think you're pretty much on target. I think that the younger ages, there needs to be guidance. Because we're not going to read every book that goes in there. First grade book that goes on. So there needs to be guidelines at that point. Here's, some of the problem would need to be age-guided. I don't want to say age-specific, but age-guided probably. When you get to the junior high and high school, there probably needs to be guidelines about what is acceptable in the library and what's not. When it comes to a novel that's going to be the source of class instruction, that comes to higher level street. Does that make sense? Is that what we're saying?
I think it would go a long ways to have a syllabus used for each class or subject area where you would know that this is what is going to be taught as a parent about, just like you would get at the college level course. And these are the reading materials that are part of this course. These are projects that are a part of this course that you're going to be graded on. And to me, that's pretty simple for us to look through and really have a general idea of what's going to be expected in the classroom. Then just approving a list of 150 books is really kind of narrowed down to your subject area. This is the, you know, where the kids are going to have to select one of these five books to write a paper on, you know? So there's, I think that producing a syllabus, and it goes a long way for some of our parents' requests for having curriculum posted online. You know, there's, there's a course catalog for the most part with syllabus or syllabi for each subject area. And that's where I think junior high and high school could, could really go a long way to easing some parent anxieties and concerns.
So just help me summarize. That suggestion is at junior high and high school. There's a course catalog that's on my access for parents to review. Dr. Ronald, Dr. Hall, initial thoughts on, and again, I understand you're on the spot. I don't know if you have, maybe, or maybe you have a thought about this.
I mean, I discussed it last week.
Okay. What's, what's the initial thoughts on that? Is that something where it's easy to do or we're well-equipped to do it? Or would it be a major project?
I think that there definitely are teachers in classes that already have a syllabus and it's shared with parents in a variety of ways. And then there's some that don't. And it's, I agree that that is an excellent way to convey to parents, here's what's being taught, here's the material that we're being taught, here's the goals for the course. I think that we should have some maybe common guidelines about how that gets communicated home, whether that's through email or some of our teachers do have websites that can be posted on a website. I understand that pushing it out to the classroom is not always the best way to make it to, to parents. So I, again, I don't have a solid idea. Would be a guess for me to say how many teachers are already doing that, but feel confident that some are. And so that's certainly, I think that's one part of this conversation. I don't know, I don't know that answers the question of what should come to the board.
I understand, but I, there's the frustration that I think we are hearing is at the parent level.
Yes.
And if that was, if that was, it seems to me, and I tend to have sometimes too simplistic look at things like this. But it seems to me that we could move more in that direction to whatever extent we can. And if we can move 100% that direction, that would just be like awesome. I think that gives parents who are concerned the information that they are concerned about, I think.
Can I ask?
What are your thoughts on that?
Can I ask some clarifying questions? Is the syllabus your thought process journey of just the communication piece? Or is this a set in stone, this is what our kids are doing? We will not veer from this?
Right.
Is that? I completely oppose that 100%. Because as a parent and as a teacher, I need to know that my kids' teachers are adapting what's happening in that classroom based on what those learners are doing. So for example, if there's a situation where our kids, my students, my kids not understanding the American Revolution and the syllabus says that next week, we're moving on to whatever new thing, but the teacher determines that this class is really having a hard time understanding this concept and needs to spend another week on it, and he's going to bring in some supplemental videos. And perhaps he's going to read a diary from the time of the American Revolution. I need that teacher to have the ability to do that. Because those kids need to learn. I'm sorry?
It doesn't have to have a date.
So like, but that was introducing material that was not in the syllabus.
Let's, let's talk about the difference between us. Okay. I'm not a high school or grade school teacher. I'm not a college teacher. I do teach real estate pre-licensing. I'm licensed to do that. And we use a syllabus. And the syllabus kind of is a roadmap that shows what we're going to cover. It shows the order we're going to cover in, cover it in. Ours even shows the weeks we plan on talking about that item. But it is not the lesson plan for each one of those sessions. But it is not the lesson plan for each one of those sessions. The, in reality, the, the lesson plan for each session does shift and adjust. It shifts and adjusts because students need more time on the math portion, or they need more time on the law portion. And then that varies with the class, and varies with the students. It also, sometimes current events. Right? You're, you're talking about fair housing, and there was just a big fair housing case. So all of a sudden, maybe we spend a little more time on that because it's relevant. It doesn't change our syllabus. We're still covering over the course of the class the same material. We're covered in pretty much the same order, on the same week.
But you're introducing the material that wasn't listed in that syllabus. That's the argument of clarification.
No, I think that there's flexibility to do that within those guardrails of the syllabus. So you're still accomplishing the same things. You still have goals that you're trying to accomplish. There's objectives that you're trying to accomplish with this, this course. And you can attain that, those objectives in different ways. But you have, like Max said, a roadmap of how it's gonna end there. So it may look a little bit different, but it also prevent, it also helps to maintain some consistency across classrooms, especially where you have different teachers teaching the same subjects.
Sure.
Where sometimes, I don't think kids are getting the same experience.
Oh, yeah.
So I, I think that they're, you know, to me, it doesn't make sense.
Okay, so I guess when I was picturing a syllabus, I'm picturing a syllabus that has, these are the goals and objectives of this course. By the time you finish this course, these are the things you're gonna be able to do. Here are all the materials you're gonna need for this course. So here are all the books. Here are all the, you know, articles that we're gonna pull out of this, that, and the other thing. If that's not, I mean, if, so to me, what you're saying, Jeremy, is you wanna have, like, let's say, this is the high school civics course. Here are the goals that we're gonna meet. Here are the standards they're aligned to. Here are things your kid is gonna be able to know and do by the time they finish this course. That's the syllabus?
Well, and there's also, like, there's by week one, week two, week three, this is what our plan is.
So what happens though if they veer off of that?
Well, I think that's, that's, obviously, there's gotta be some flexibility, because you can't just plow through.
Well, you say, obviously, which I agree with you. To me, that would be common sense and obvious. But if we're gonna sit here and say, we need to approve this policy, or this is now we need to approve it at the board level, is somebody gonna be upset that, well, week four, you're supposed to be talking about this, and then week five?
No, I think that's, I think that's some index.
I agree, but I'm worried that that's gonna happen.
Here's, here's, here's what, okay? Say, you're teaching civics, I'm teaching civics, and Jeremy's teaching civics. We're all teaching the same classes in three different sections, okay? And there's an article that just works really great to cover a topic. And we decide as the department, or the department chair, Jeremy, or chair of the board, or Jeremy, decides that we all need to use this article. All right, well, then maybe that's listed in the syllabus, because we're all using this article.
Sure.
Okay. Maybe I'm, maybe my class is having particular questions or particular problems with one issue. And the night before, I read a great article that helps clarify that for my class. And I bring that into my class, because I'm the teacher, I'm the educator. I think that'll connect with my class. It's not part of what everybody's doing.
Yeah.
I, I think that's where we have the guardrails and trust teachers to make decisions. Now, if it works really, really great, maybe I wanna come back to my department and say, hey, y'all, maybe we need to put this in. Or maybe not, I don't know. But as courses develop, that's how that stuff comes in, right? Because somebody tried it and it looked good. And I was, I mean, that's one way.
I just worry about, this is, this is a direct hand-on example too. I can give multiple. But last year, when I was teaching fifth graders how to write a literary essay, I planned to use the same outline, the same curriculum, same guidelines, same materials, same books with this fifth grade class that I had used with this fifth grade class next door. And when I got into that situation, it was an entirely different class. They needed a different mentor text. They needed different examples. It was a very diff, they were at very different places at the time. So what I don't wanna have happen is for us to say, this is what we're expecting to happen, and then to somehow take away the autonomy of a teacher who knows what's best for their class, to be able to do what's best for their class. Do you understand my worry, Jeremy?
Yeah, I, I do. And I think that, that that's valid, but I don't think it's reality. I think that they are still gonna have flexibility to make changes to their students. Now, I wish I could say that's the same with the doctor-patient relationship, but you can't.
You gotta do it via church, or the government college.
But it, yeah, so I think in reality, there is flexibility. And, but I think that having some, a, a general roadmap and guidelines and the, the primary materials that are gonna be used within a classroom that are gonna be used for grade or evaluation, those things should be apparent and easy for students and parents to identify and evaluate themselves.
I agree with that. I mean, to me, the idea that the board is approving curriculum and instructional materials, for me, means that the board is approving the process in which the district communicates what students are learning and what are the materials they're running from, and what are we saying about those materials. I don't wanna look at every worksheet. I see my role as a board member to ensure there is a process in place for a parent to be able to go and figure out what worksheets are being used, what texts are being used. If you set the process up appropriately, and we are, if we have not started this at all, then there's gonna be a decent amount of work to get started. But other districts have done this. This is not reinventing the wheel. You have a list of the books that you use. It could be any of these books. Stuff that library at once takes some time, we can get it done. Textbooks come and go. They come before the board, that's a little bit different. Books come and go. But we owe the parents and the students, as we put those lists together, something akin to Common Sense Media. Common Sense Media is a great resource. It takes a book, it tells you what the content is, if there are any triggers, if there's sexual, if there's identity, like, what are the concepts in this book that your child might run into? I think a lot of the feedback we've heard from parents is that they were taken by surprise about some of the themes in the literature that was presented to their kids. No one likes to be taken by surprise by that. We, as a board, I believe our role in approving instructional materials is to make sure that there is a concise, standardized way that we say, when you approach a class, this is what you can expect. That probably includes the syllabus. It probably includes major texts. It probably includes worksheets. Teachers use a lot of the same stuff over and over. So yes, there's some work to be done. It could also include a section that says, we also may pull documents from the New York Times, other government sites, the Constitution. You could have a section that says, when I pull other material, it's usually from these types of sources. It's different for me as a parent if it's a New York Times article versus, can't even think of it. I don't know. I'm gonna say Playboy. If you can think of anything else, that would be like ridiculous, right? But it's gonna make a difference to me where the articles came from. And I think we can have some section where people go, oh, those look like resources that I'm gonna be okay with text cover. I'm sorry, that's literally the only thing that come to mind. Because I was gonna say some sexual problems. Right. But, but I feel like in our discussion here, where we are getting lost in the forest for the trees as a board is this idea of approval. Now, we want to micromanage. I don't actually wanna say yes to a book, no to a book. I wanna say yes to a process that ensures parents understand the books that are gonna be put in the hands of their kids and the content they're in, and they have the ability to weigh in before that happens on whether or not they feel it's appropriate. That is a process issue. We can do that, and of course, there are gonna be exceptions. But the more that you have the bulk of that done, the changes are not gonna be, I mean, as long as there's a process for saying, oh, I updated, I added a couple books. Added a couple books here. It's not an impossible task. Other school districts literally say, this is the list of books. Do not put a book on there, even if it's a third grade book for your library, until you update that so parents can see it. It's just a part of the process for adding to your classroom as a teacher. I think we can get around the hand-tying of the teachers for a process that delivers what it is that I think we're being asked for, which is some idea of what's going on in the classroom and what our kids can expect. And my ability as a parent to weigh in on whether or not that works for me personally. And if it doesn't, what can I expect my child to have as an alternative? So when we say approve, I don't want us to think that, I don't wanna have a discussion about which books. I don't actually care. But I do wanna ensure a process that says, these are the books that your kids can use. These are the themes in those books. If that's dangerous or triggering for your child, you have the ability to know that beforehand. And around those themes that might be sensitive, this is where we're going to be digging in and teaching. And some of these topics, we're just gonna gloss by. And I think we can do that.
I'm just gonna say that I think this, I'm a lot of linear. And just say, I think this is something that really, I mean, are we 100% in lockstep or reading on every detail? Probably not, because we're some individual people. But I think there's, I, I, I think big picture, we're all trying to accomplish the same thing. I really do. I think most of what the concerns that each of us have are common. And I think we can put together something that works pretty much for everything. Will it check every single board member's, every single box? Probably not. It probably won't check every, it certainly won't check every parent's in the box. Because we've got parents all across the boards. But I think it, I, I think it can check most people's boxes, and most boxes for most people. And most importantly, I think it can provide everybody with a, with a baseline of expectations that they can count on. That's what I'd like to do. I don't want teachers to feel like they're being handcuffed or micromanaged. I would like them to feel somewhat that they're being protected, that they know that here's how we operate. And if I'm operating in this way, you know, I'm good. Rather than all of a sudden, something happens and, and, you know, lots of calm things. I mean, let's face it, usually in the past when we've gotten involved in this kind of stuff, this got to come to our attention, how does it come to our attention? Through an incident, right? And if I was a teacher, I wouldn't like that, because every time there's an incident, it happened most probably in the classroom. And if I had to teach, I would like to kind of protect them from that too. And so they know what to expect. And again, I, I think we, we need to look at putting some basic things in place. I don't know how big of an issue it is. I, I don't, don't know what obstacles are in the way of getting some kind of a syllabus online for all of our classes. I'm sure there's some teachers that have it there. I'm sure there's some teachers that could do it tomorrow morning, first thing, before they start their first period of class, feels like, God, and they would just have to upload it if we had the mechanism for it to do that. I'm sure for others, it would be a more complicated one process. I don't know. But I, I think that's the way we need. In my mind, as a parent, who's a layperson in education, who knows what I know about education from element of school and education, and for 19 years beyond school, Lord, that makes sense to me.
But I think in order to protect those teachers, and in order to make sure that if we're going to tackle this endeavor, it is useful, the district, AKA the administration, needs to provide a standardized format to do that. So parents go, in every class, the syllabus has the same format. You find the textbooks in the same place. You find the worksheets in the same place. You find websites that might be used in the same place. Because what will not go well for these teachers, and I don't want them doing all this work to have it not go well, is have everyone have their own format for that, and parents get frustrated because nothing looks the same. So if, if we're going to do this, let's do this in a systematic way so that the process and the output looks the same across the district for all of the classes, and then becomes a much more effective tool for teachers to use and update, and parents to use and inform themselves.
So essentially, if I want, I have a student in high school, and he's got seven classes, I should be able to go to seven spots on seven websites and click on about the same spot. And looking for something that's titled the same way and marked the same way.
Then when I open it, it looks the same. First is the textbooks, then is the worksheets, then are the websites. Here's, you know, attached, you see that our version of the Common Sense Media themed books. You know, I mean, we owe that to the teachers to devise a process that is easy for them to use and upload and maintain, and then provide the consistency that parents can look for. Parents will be frustrated if it looks different and it's not consistent.
Dr. Romo, Dr. Hall, this is helpful.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, again, I, I guess I'm, my first question is, I'd like to know and figure out, you know, how many teachers already have a syllabus that's out there? I think that's a relevant thing. I think that this process deserves a voice of the staff and the teachers in it to also talk about how it can look and how, how it should go. I think, I think it is a, a goal to have a standardized format. You know, I, I fear that trying to explain and gain and have to gain an understanding of how much time this takes always sounds like excuses. It's our reality. Our teachers are using our early release days to work on unfinished learn. You know, we came off of a year last year of, a year and three months of having not a complete school day. So we've got some gaps to fill there. So it is, I'm not saying that, that work can't be done. Work has been done. Despite what some folks might think, there's, you know, I've heard a lot of criticism about what's on our website, what's not on our website. There's more on our website about curriculum than there has been historically. And also, I would invite anybody who has questions about curriculum, I would just throw this out there. How many of you have come in and met with Dr. Romo, or met with me? I invite you in to do that. If you've got an email, it's, it's a phone call, it beats trying to communicate in this context, which really is not a two-way communication type of thing. We know we have work to do. I've never sat up here in the last couple of months and said that things are perfect and that there's not work to do. We know that there's work to do. But we're a large organization. You know, we've got 200, over 200 teachers teaching a variety of different things. And we're asking a lot of them. And so we'll find ways to carve out time to, to work on this. We'll continue to do that. Our teachers have been working on, on what should be posted on, on the website. So I don't know, Dr. Romo, if you could provide an update on where we are with that?
So I think ultimately, the goal is to have everything up on the website. That's what we've been working towards the past several years. And I think as we said, there's always, it's not just curriculum writing that we're working on through all of this. You know, like many other applications and other things, You know, like many other applications and other things, our teachers have templates that they're trying to spin and keep going while probably their least favorite thing, formerly writing curriculum. So when we get to, when you go to the website and you see the pieces that are put up there now, as we continue to add to it weekly as units are finished, the curriculum that's up there right now, it's done by grade level, by subject area, by unit, by unit of study. And within that, teachers, the DIRTT team, we had a lot of discussions over the course of a year of what was going to be included on that curriculum piece. And the key of that was what did they feel like was doable and would be helpful? So in understanding that we would continue to grow on that, as once we got this foundational piece done, then we would continue to add to it. And so right now, you'll find that there'll be a unit name on there, there'll be a pacing. It'll tell you, you know, is this unit designed for two weeks, three weeks, a month? It looks, it can look a little bit different at different grade levels because like at the elementary, sometimes it'll say like September slash October, you know? Because it may be something like social studies or science that's taught every other day or every other unit, right? And then within that are the essential questions. And so these are questions that are not meant to be answered yes or no. But these are questions that are meant to get kids really thinking and excited. Just take that with whatever the content is, right? So I just want to clarify, we all understand that we all get excited about different things. But that would give them thinking about what it is that they're going to be learning about. So, and then from there, it goes into the skills, which I think is what kind of what you're getting at. What is it as a result of this unit? What can I expect my students to be able to do at the end of this unit of study? And so that's what came out of both the DIRTT committee and actually to go back, we started this with the first vertical team, which was math and science, who also gave input on what they felt was doable within the year that that were needs. So each of the vertical teams, they need for seven meetings. In addition to writing curriculum, we're working on other things during those meetings. So sometimes it's a textbook adoption, we're going through that lengthy process of reviewing materials. Sometimes like when we did the math, we were talking about what is the research base in math? Why might we be looking at moving from what we used to do with high math in fifth grade, compacted math, then at the junior high? So there's a lot of things that we're trying to get accomplished within those meeting times. And so that's why this was kind of established as the starting point. Oh, and I'm sorry, I forgot. Also, the standards are listed on there, whatever standards are going to be covered in the later. So those are the big pieces, the unit names, the pacing, the standards, essential questions and skills. So that's kind of where we are on the website right now. It's just, every time something gets added, it's updated. You'll find now that all of the, the common texts for grades three through 12 for ELA, you'll find that those are now up on the website. As far, in addition, a definition kind of of what is a literature circle? What is it used for? And then the choice selections within that, and then the curriculum objection form. So all three of those documents are right there on the very front of the curriculum website. In addition to that, based off of the feedback from the last board meeting, I've been working with lots of groups of teachers and getting feedback and kind of talking and lots of discussion about kind of what would be those kind of boundaries, right? Like what would we, what would we say? These are the things that we would use for instructional materials in terms of content at the K2 level. What would that look like at the three, five level? What would that look like at the junior high? What would that look like at the high school? So those discussions have been going on. We have lots of feedback. Some of that's guided by content that we currently have been using and have been using for a long time. Other things are driven by maybe some of the feedback that we receive from parents that we've been using in terms of trying to kind of set those boundaries or guidelines. And then I'd say the other big thing that we've just been talking about is communication. Like how can we communicate to parents in advance what we're going to be teaching and what they then expect? So that, you know, it's on the website if they need it. Once we get to that point, but then parents don't necessarily have to wait for that. Send an email and at a time or send that information out at the beginning of the course that they have that information. So I think in terms of curriculum, those are kind of like, not the only things we've been working on. Those are kind of some of the big things related to this that we've either been working on long term or recently.
Does the, when you said this is online, I'm sure, I would suspect that we don't have a common look across the district. But are we striving to do a common look, maybe at least within buildings or the grade levels or subjects?
Everything is submitted on a form. It looks exactly the same from kindergarten through 12 grade. It's under, I can pull it up real quick and show you.
So it does sound like, you know, we're quote there yet. It sounds like we have started.
So here you can see, these are the common texts, this is the literature, all the curriculum injection. Then up here, I mean, just acceleration and title fall under responsibility. So those are up there as well. And then you've got K5. This, they look just slightly different here because of, I'll show you in a minute. But K5, if you just go through, say you want to look at third grade, and then there's all the content areas. And then here, at the top of every page are the standards. And so those are the standards for reading for third grade. And then here are the units. They're all right here. And this format, they actually submit it on a Google form. And so it calculates into the same format for every single course or grade at the, in the district. And then you can see it's just a little bit different for six through 12, you have sixth through eighth grade. And then at the high school level, you know, it's more so within, you know, within the department because of all the courses. So we were making really good progress and then we had a little pandemic. And so it kind of slows down a little bit. But I think by the end of this, so ELA, remember, is taking two years to work on. By the end of hopefully this first semester, all of the reading units will be up. And then we'll finish up with writing here in the second semester and that should be up on the website. We're just doing those as two separate units per grade level or course in most cases. There'll be some that'll be even more integrated. Yep. And so then as we move through, we'll have to go back through and pick up the ones that we didn't finish from before. But the teachers have been great with it. It's kind of, I hate to say it's kind of slow and steady, but in a way, it's kind of slow and steady just because of all the other responsibilities and things that we're working through right now.
So I kind of agree with what Lindsay said earlier, that we don't want to just make all this work for our teachers and have them do all this mindless work or whatever. But it doesn't actually solve the problem at hand. Which at this point seems to be people actually understanding what's happening with their student.
Well, I'm like kind of aggro about it because it looks like, it looks to me like we're having some progress on a lot of areas. Yet I heard earlier tonight, there's a feeling we've done nothing. So where's the disconnect there? Is it because syllabus is up? Is it what's helping understand some people?
I mean, so I guess what I'm saying is I hear all this good work happening. And it's not that I don't want the good work to happen or something. But I don't want the teachers to do much work and still have everyone upset, right? And that doesn't seem like a good outcome for anyone at the table.
Please note, this work has been going on for.
No, I know, for a long time.
So and it's gonna, it's gonna continue. But I do agree that, you know, there's still concern and.
I mean, there's, I guess there's still a problem that we're hearing about that I would love for us to try to solve or make a, to do something about that does not diminish the work that's being done and does not create a big new pile of work. But I feel as though the parents are still saying, I don't understand. So, you know, there might be a list of books there, but then there are other books being used. And those other books being used are books the parents are complaining about. So maybe we have to go back to this idea of bumpers where, I mean, we have a list of books, a book not on the list is being read in school. And it's about a dad raising a shotgun and trying to murder his children. And for pre-teens, maybe the parents don't like that very much, right? So we do all this work and yet that's still slipping through. And then the parents are really upset. And I don't know if it's just a mistake or whatever, but maybe some kind of idea that there's boundaries or bumpers or whatever we'll call them then could help their knocking these inadvertent slippers or something.
Just last week, I got an email from one of my students, one of my kid's teachers, and it was describing a scene in a book that they were getting ready to read. Just giving the parents a heads up. I agree, we appreciate that. And with all the different parents being filed out there, it would affect some kids and it might not affect other kids. So I appreciate that parents were given a heads up. I know that that can't be done, or maybe it can be done, like across the board. But I agree with these guidelines that we kind of need to have boundaries for like sensitive topics, political issues, sexual issues, stuff like that. Just don't know how we can get there and how quickly we can get there. It's obviously something that we need to address.
Nicole, would you just show us some scrapes?
Yeah.
Or it's really good. And I don't, I, but again, we've heard from frustrated parents or like, we've done nothing, we've done nothing. True, we've done a lot. So what we're doing is that hitting some expectations. And I think mostly from what I'm sensing is that, you know, what I think syllabus is might address a little bit. And then, you know, the list of supplemental reading requirements. I think that would eliminate a lot of our, I think that would hit a lot of the target a lot of people are looking for.
So we are repeating on criteria for selection. And it's, I don't know what to say, but then it's being, it's being worked on and at some point it will be completed. It's one piece that probably will.
Can I just interject that as we've been having these conversations about books and materials, a couple of policies that we already have in place address the concerns that parents had. So like teaching about controversial issues is six on eight. And it deals more with discussions of sensitive topics in the instructional program, including guest speakers. But I feel like it could be applied to materials that we're using in the classroom. It says that it need be age appropriate with proper decorum, considering the student's ages should be followed. It should be consistent with the curriculum and serve an educational purpose. Informative, present balanced view, respectful of the rights and opinion with everyone. Emotional criticisms and hurtful sarcasm should be avoided. And not tolerant of profanity or slander. I mean, we have that in there for other things. I feel like that's a common sense thing to put in for instructional materials, kind of those bumpers. But I think outlining a process, this is how books get put into circulation would be helpful. But we're going back to reading the idea of the Common Sense Media website. We do use that, don't we?
Yes.
So, okay, can you tell me more about how we use that?
So it's just, it's just one resource. We also use School Library Journal and some other recommendations that place ages on that. The books that people were not happy with, all of those are rated 14 and older. None of those are rated 18 and older. So, you know, I want to be clear that, you know, there are, I was just saying, there are different things that are okay for different families. We see that all, so I just want to be clear that even though we tend to be focusing here on like six through 12, what parents find okay at K through five varies very much as well.
And I'm glad you said that because a book that I read aloud to first graders is called It's Okay to Be Different by Todd Parry. It's a fabulous book and it talks about how we are all unique and we are all individuals. In the book, it says, it's okay to have two moms. Because that's what, there are stepfamilies, poor kids have a mom and a stepmom. It doesn't always have to be about homosexuality. But having that sentence that might be two dads, having that in there might make some families very uncomfortable. But it's happening at a K5 level too. So I'm really glad that you brought that up, Nicole, because it's, we're concentrating so much on six, 12, which I think is where a lot of our concerns have been. But we also may be thinking about those K5 kiddos too. And what teachers are empowered to do within their own classroom. I'm sorry, I cut you off.
No, no, I, it is very challenging to find material that everybody feels like it's okay. There's going to be some disagreement on different things. And so I think one of the biggest things that we've been talking about with staff that I think is ultimately very fair is how do we just do a better job at communicating with parents that this is what we're getting ready to study? And so then you can have this conversation.
Right.
And so, you know, the book that I put in my board report that's going into E1 this time, told the teachers, you need to email parents ahead of time before the unit starts a couple of weeks. And include a PDF of this section of the chapter. There's a very brief assault that takes place by a family member. And that can be a trigger for some of our kids. While not very graphic, it's still, and I say not very graphic, there's nothing, sexual assault's always graphic. So I mean, just the idea of it, right? But just to let parents know this is in there if you don't want your child to read the chapter. It doesn't impact the whole book, it doesn't impact the unit. It's just, then your child doesn't need to read that. If you want to read it with your child, so you can discuss it ahead of time. You know, you have options just to be able to communicate that to families. The rest of the book, it's not, you know, it's a memoir. It's, it just, it covers a lot of topics that are goals of that course and content. Without, there's no language in that book. So I, I don't know, it's hard. It's a hard call a lot of times. And I think we heard from some families last year about some derogatory terms that were used in some materials. And we heard from families this year that said they're okay with that. They don't want other plural words to be used in curriculum. So it varies from family to family. And it's, the best we can do is try to communicate clearly and openly about what it is that we're using and give parents choice. I mean, I'm gonna make a suggestion. I don't think we can solve this tonight. So it seems to me like perhaps a good next step would be to find some way to survey parents with the work we've done so far. Make sure that the work we've done so far is meeting their expectations. Find out where the gaps might exist, where we are making assumptions about what parents want to hear or where we're overlooking a topic entirely. I hate to have us go through all this work with the Google forms and never check with the parents to see if it's easy for them to use, it's giving them the information that they want, it's relevant in actually answering the questions and the concerns that they have. To do this in a vacuum really sets us up for some complications down the road. So it seems perhaps it would be a good idea to have a committee. I mean, I don't know, we have a Blue Dog blueprint for facilities. Perhaps crazy one could have the same approach where we could not make decisions in a vacuum and actually get some real time feedback on what it is that we're doing, where we're going, and if that meets the expectations of parents and kids.
That's something to happen.
Seems like getting feedback is the best way to understand how more of the community feels about this and then let us move forward.
I think I would want to know, is this information that we currently have useful to the parents? I mean, I agree that we would want to give something that, I think parents are still having trouble finding what's going on in the classroom.
Right.
I think that's the, that a key question, does this information help them understand that?
It doesn't matter if it's on the website, if the parent doesn't know it's on the website or doesn't know how to find it, and then still their kid comes home from a book and they're upset. So it's nice if the book is on the website, but if the parents don't actually understand what's happening, it's not going to solve the problem.
Can we bump this topic to a study session or can we dive deeper?
I, I think we should. I talked about study sessions earlier, and we have definitely veered more into a study session approach with this than this is being approached with, I think it's been a good discussion. Let's look for a date coming up when we can do that. Give Nicole a little more time, her thoughts, based on our conversation.
What are we preparing?
Any thoughts you have based on our conversations tonight?
Well, I think one would be, as Megan says, is there a way that we can evaluate efficiently whether parents have information from what we currently have on the website that is useful to them?
I.
You know, we don't need a, we don't need a 50 question survey, I mean, it's just, it's just simple.
And to be clear, I'm not necessarily looking for a presentation from staff.
Right.
If you've got anything, that would be good, but just a time for us maybe to continue to discuss and rather than not explore solutions and options.
Can we talk a little more about the process for getting books or materials into classrooms? I don't know, I mean, it, I don't, I don't know. I feel like that's something that we're hearing a lot, the communication piece and the process piece, feel like the two big, big things.
Yeah, I guess I don't want another major presentation either, I'd rather have more discussion and be able to provide some direction.
Yeah, so, I mean, if you think of things for something to be useful, that's great, but certainly I don't think our expectation is, the two of you spend a lot of, a lot of time creating a presentation. We're never gonna make any money on our YouTube channel, but I will, you and I will talk and we'll go to study session days. We'll try to do this sooner rather than later.
I appreciate the conversation, thank you.
Yeah, hopefully that was helpful.
Can I also suggest that we bump this board member request to the next agenda? I don't know about anybody else, but the 1020, and I know we still have quite a bit of work to do, so if that's super pertinent, great, then we'll continue, and if not, if we can bump it.
Go bump it, that's fine. COVID, I think we had a discussion in COVID.
I don't really have anything, we're open, that's the best thing. We're open, we only have the adapted pause plan. Things are going well.
Any questions, anything we want to discuss as a board?
Do we know what the governor's mandate is going to do, how that's gonna look for us?
Doesn't change what we're doing.
Right. The change is that vaccinated students will then be quarantined due to exposure, right?
I have to be honest, I don't remember that part of it, but I'll.
Any student who is exposed will be subject to 14 days quarantine.
I'll read that. It's, that's not exactly the way that that is going, because it also said, heard that we follow the local public health, and our public health is going to, we have 10 days quarantine, so it said 14, or what is mandated by the public health department. Vaccinated students do not have quarantine. So that, that doesn't, it's not changing anything for us. I actually.
We just need to make that clear, because that's its mandate. I know it says for local health department, but the local health department, because we know what the new mandate says, they may change their mind too.
Yeah, I know, they put out something today that just kind of reiterated and it talked again, and they had a line of, like a spreadsheet that we've been doing the whole time, they have one that they're now pushing out to the other schools in the county. And it, it talks about what close contacts are, and it kind of reiterated within that to the schools that vaccinated students are not having quarantine.
And trust the state is still.
Yeah, trust the state is still.
Can we just confirm that since the new mandate, just because.
I got it out today, I mean, I think they sent a thing out, Jennifer sent me, sent me a copy of what she sent to the regional superintendent today from Champagne Public Health, reiterating what the, what the, what that means for us along with the executive order, so it should be coming out to Dr. Paul from, from very numerous regional superintendents and what Champagne Public Health put out in convention about today. So I've talked to her a number of times over the last several weeks as things have been changing and the mandates have come out, and she has assured me, now, could something change in five months? Absolutely. It happens all the time, but she has assured me that what we are doing is kind of the gold standard. What we've been doing all along is just what we're gonna keep doing, is what they told me. So they're trying to get other schools to do what we've been doing.
We don't want, we want to be responsible, but we don't want to ramp up quarantine. We want kids in classrooms.
Well, that's the goal. Every, and I, I mean, I have another webinar, I've been listening to all the same webinars about COVID in schools, and that is the goal. The main goal of what we're doing is to keep kids in school and to, to use reason and to do the test to stay and use that, and it's been very effective in our history. I mean, it's all on the dashboard, 414 exposures, we've only quarantined 144 kids. So we'd be a test to stay and vaccinated students make up the other bulk of that. So, so I think that's pretty good for, for what we've got. We've had 71 students that are positive so far in the first month of school. So what the numbers are on the dashboard are just from August 18th.
Keith, have you, Lindsey, can you address outdoor lunches for our K5 kids? That, I mean, they're having lunch outdoors, right?
One minute, one minute.
Okay. My concern, my concern is the mask free eating, because it makes it a period of time increasing exposure risk. Is how spread, are they spread out at all?
I can, I can speak to what's done here. Here we separate, we have our students with cold lunch eat out in this area, sometimes hot lunch eat in the cafeteria, and spread out as much as they can be in those situations, but then we also, they have to eat fast and then they go out to recess. So I think we can trail following a similar thing, but we, yeah, we eventually are looking at coming inside, probably tomorrow actually, because it's supposed to rain all day, but certainly for extended period of time in the winter. There've been a couple of days when we've been inside already, but that's gonna obviously increase and be more consecutive days.
Okay, anything else anybody's got? All right, closed session is necessary tonight for two things. First of all, item one is on the agenda, we don't need that anymore. Item two, collecting negotiating matters from the public body and its employees or the representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules. We want more classes of employees, and then two, we want to talk about litigation and when action gets back in time, we have to, the public body is involved in it, and when the public body finds that action is probable imminent, and the case basis refined should be recorded and entered in the mask of quarantine. So basically, negotiating, collecting negotiating matters and litigation are the two things we're going to close session for. Would you want to notify the public that there is a proposed, we have a CA, which we could take action on following the closed session potentially? Is there a motion to go into closed session right now for those two reasons? So.
I'm tired.
Good, there we go. No, I hope you heard it, right? I just heard voices.
Jessica first, she said, we didn't.
All right, roll call.
Schultz, yes. Lamb?
Yes.
Murray?
Yes.
And this is, you have the, the.
Yes.
Yes, Jared, the link that Ken and, they will, so they can use the same link, right? They will, they will, they will not get it. They will not get it. They will, they will. So Ken and Shelley, stay right on the link you're on, we will clear the curtain and be back in about five or ten minutes in closed session. Thank you, everyone.